Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, Exeter. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 16, 2024 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. As the hour is 6:30 p.m., I'll call the meeting to order. Our first business item this evening is possibly to go into non-public for about 20 minutes or half hour or so. I would entertain a motion to enter non-public under RSA 91A32D.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion seen done, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Chartran.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
The clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The board will enter into non-public. Thank you.
Welcome to the Exeter Select Board Meeting Minute for January 8, 2024. Concerns were voiced by residents regarding transparency on information about the fate of Pickpocket Dam.
I represent a group of concerned residents about the dam. My house is built into the side of the cliff. If this water level goes down, I'm worried what's going to happen. My neighbors are all fishermen, and they paddleboard and they canoe. This is going to have a significant impact, and nobody was notified. The studies that needed to happen came after the decision. So there's a problem.
I just want to reiterate what the chair has said. For the second time, you have said that the fix is in on this, and it's not. We applied for a grant. We made a decision to apply for a grant that would defray the cost of removal. No decision has been made. We've received no final report. So I personally would appreciate it if you would stop saying that a decision has been made, because it hasn't.
A warm welcome was given to the new Public Works Director, Stephen Cronin.
I'm very excited to introduce our new Public Works Director, who started last week, Mr. Stephen Cronin. Good evening.
It's certainly been an exciting start to my tenure here with the first substantial snowfall of the season this past weekend, but I've been very impressed with the DPW operation as a whole.
Budget talks took center stage as the board deliberated on the fiscal year 2024 operating budget.
I think we have had a fairly lengthy budget process at this point, and we are looking again at a budget that is, the increase is 8.13% over FY '23. One of the central themes of this budget has been the fact that it's a people budget. We have worked hard to retain and incentivize employees through this budget. We're also faced with some fixed cost increases due to inflation pretty much across the board, I would say, in terms of expenses and employee benefits. Health insurance in particular is up 10% this year. So there are some budgetary challenges.
Discussion was had on restructuring or joining certain committees to address the issue of lack of attendance and not meeting quorums.
We looked at all of the boards and committees, the makeup of them, the vacancies, and we just went through each one and tried to find any committee or board that might need some help in terms of meeting a quorum. We looked at attendance and so forth. Presently, the makeup of the Water and Sewer Committee are seven voting members, including the select board member. You would need four people to meet the quorum, and I know, I think I can attest to that, that that's been difficult.
It has been difficult.
We talked about two different options, Selectwoman Chartran and I. One was to reduce the Water and Sewer Committee to three people, or to decrease it to five members, but increasing the number of select board members who could vote to two.
I prefer the latter option. I think three's a tight number, and five is better. And to have two, given the importance of Water and Sewer for the town and for this board, having two select board members makes sense to me.
During committee reports, Selectwoman Julie Gilman spoke about local housing initiatives and broader legislative matters that are being addressed at the state level in New Hampshire.
There's a housing bill that is aimed at stabilizing rent, and it would put the select board in charge of stabilizing the rent in the community.
I just made the same face.
Not everybody did. I don't have any idea where that's going to go. Well, no, I have an idea where that's going to go.
Yeah, you do.
But somebody's bringing it up, and they're going to keep, I know who it is, and they're going to keep bringing it up.
The meeting then moved on to regular business. To hear the entire meeting, visit our Exeter TV YouTube page. The next select board meeting is slated for January 16. See you there.
Winter or summer, time passes as quickly in Exeter as anywhere else. From the earliest days of the movies, there has been a picture theater in town. Townspeople go fairly regularly, and Fred Marky, the manager, knows everyone's likes and dislikes.
Opened in 1915, the Ioka operated as a theater for over nine decades, closing its doors in 2008. Sitting dormant for years, the fate of the building was unknown. Numerous attempts to save the historic building and bring back a theater or other businesses had failed. In March of 2020, developers David Cowie and Jay Caswell purchased the building as Ioka Properties LLC with the hopes of turning the former movie theater into a mixed-use building. We spoke with developer David Cowie to learn more about what made them interested in the building.
Sure. Well, I got involved with Exeter back in 2013, the Al Rose Shoe Factory. That was pretty much an empty building at the time, vacant, derelict. So brought that back to life over many years, driving back and forth through downtown, you know, just looking at the Ioka every day, and just wondering why that was sitting there empty. So when the opportunity came along to purchase the Ioka, it was almost like the next step in, you know, a development in Exeter.
Deconstruction work took place in late 2020 and was most likely unnoticed by residents other than the removal of the historic Ioka marquee. Due to the location of the building downtown, crews were unable to use large construction equipment, and therefore, much of the work inside was done by hand. The removal of the old theater's wooden facade revealed the beauty of the building's well-preserved brickwork, which is expected to be a prominent feature throughout the revitalized building. Reconstruction work began in late 2021. The extensive structural redesign includes the installation of an elevator shaft, the enlarging and strengthening of the riverbed footings, and a steel I-beam internal skeleton that will support the building for another century or two. Jay Caswell, partner of David Cowie at Ioka Properties LLC, has been heavily involved in the construction of the project and talked about the unique challenges of renovating a building in the heart of a downtown.
So on an old building like this, it was really socked in, there's a lot of logistical challenges building it. I kind of use this term a lot. It's kind of like building a ship in a bottle. We have to bring everything from the front, crane everything down. When you're renovating an old building, you run into things you don't expect.
Part of this process involved inserting a small portable crane into the interior of the building to assist with the installation of the steel girders on the lower levels of the building. Steel work on the higher levels required unique devices and team effort. The lone I-beam being installed weighed over 2,700 pounds. Back on the outside of the building, the developer stated that their goal is to preserve as much of the original appearance as possible while also paying tribute to its long history as the Ioka Theater. Additional windows will be added for the new upper-level floor. The back and roof of the building will be where the most visible changes will occur during the renovations. As residents can already see, windows and balconies will be added overlooking the river. There will also be a rooftop patio and garden. During construction, developer David Cowie realized the importance of restoring the alleyway between the Ioka and the adjacent property at 45 Water Street, and so he acquired the building as well, which was home to the Travel and Nature Store. In the developer's words, proceeding with the construction on both buildings simultaneously will limit impacts to the downtown and give this area an even more attractive appearance when finished by providing a glimpse of the river environment from the sidewalk. Much of the work still remains, including the addition of a new roof, the interior electrical wiring and plumbing, and the mechanical unit installations that will clear the way for the finished interior carpentry work to begin. The developer plans to give Exeter TV another update as the project nears completion.
It was a question I got daily on the street, what's going on with the Ioka? And there was a bunch of different iterations, as we all know. It took some people with some vision and some money to invest in it the way they are right now. It's going to be a phenomenal project. It's the only building that really sticks out into the water, so whoever's lucky enough to buy some of the units up on top are going to be able to see upriver and downriver. The other uses, of course, he's talking about possibly a restaurant/speak easy down here, and there's a retail floor as well. So just having this sort of back on the books, if you will, for Exeter is a big, big deal. It's a centerpiece of our town, and it was for many, many, many years as a theater. It was unfortunately not viable as a theater going forward, and what we have for the use now makes a ton of sense. So we're all very happy about it and excited, and soon it'll be finished.
We're back today with another exciting look at the ongoing renovations at the Ioka Building. Our last report in August concluded with the steelworkers having substantially completed the installation of steel girders for three levels of new decks that will overhang the river on the backside of the Ioka Building. The decks initially served as work platforms that allowed workers to cut higher openings in the brick for new windows and doors. The work included not just cutting through the brick, but also cutting through a steel I-beam that was part of the original addition to the rear of the Ioka. All of the cuts on the riverside have been completed, as well as those on the two sides of the building. At the same time as these new openings were being cut in the building, a few existing doors and window openings that were not part of the new floor plan were being sealed off and bricked over. The footage that you're currently viewing shows progress that has been made since the project was initiated back in 2020. It also demonstrates just how much the overall appearance, along with this stretch of the river, has been improved due to the combined construction activities on the Ioka and the former Travel and Nature Store buildings. While the riverside window and door work was largely out of view to the public, activities on the street side of the Ioka were potentially more visible to local residents. During the months of October and November, the installation of new underground utility lines was substantially completed. The Ioka and the former Travel and Nature Store both required replacement lines for sewer, stormwater, drinking water, fire suppression water, natural gas, and electrical lines. The gas line installation had to be completed separately from the sewer and water line installations for safety reasons. The work was completed over the course of several evenings and required that sections of Water Street between the Great Bridge and String Bridge remain closed to vehicular traffic. In late November, the work to connect the new underground electrical service to Ioka Buildings was complete. This task was done during daylight hours, and Water Street remained open to two-way vehicular traffic during installation. The installation of underground electric service lines to 45 Water Street should be the last excavation needed to the street. While the road work was underway on the street side of the building, crews were performing masonry repairs necessary to correct damage caused by the growth of a six-foot-tall tree that had taken sprout on the upper level of the building during the 12 years the building sat vacant and was overtaken by mold. This was a crucial repair that needed to be completed before work could commence on the installation of the Ioka's new roof. Work to install the new roof is scheduled to start once the masonry work is completed, provided Mother Nature cooperates. Immediately after the masons completed the brickwork to repair the tree damage, they erected scaffolding on the sidewalk in front of the Ioka. This was all in preparation for the final transformative phase to the external appearance. Three major changes will occur to the face of the Ioka Building. The first change will be the removal and relocation of the mayor building's sandstone sign sections to the upper tier of the building. Relocating the signage will allow crews to complete the second major change, cutting the openings in the brick for five new windows serving the upper floor of the building. The third major change will be the installation of a new canopy that will run along the width of the building. The new canopy will be more in keeping with the original historic face of the Ioka Theater. The sidewalks in front of the building should remain open to pedestrian traffic while the majority of the work is being performed. The developers are aware of the busy holiday downtown shopping season and will only close the sidewalks as public safety concerns dictate for short periods of time.
We've been focusing a lot about what's going on on the exterior of the building, but now let's take a look at what's going on inside.
Since August, a small army of carpenters, electricians, plumbers, heating and air conditioning technicians, and masons have been hard at work making as much headway on the inside of the building as crews have made on the outside. A new concrete subfloor was completed on the river level of the building, allowing electricians and plumbers to run miles of electric wires and pipes throughout the building. Heating and duct work was also underway, with adding light fixtures, base plates, and a new fire sprinkler system, and water mains for hoses on all levels of the building. Completing these tasks will allow crews to enter the next phase of construction that will include the installation of sheet rock work. We hope that you have enjoyed this inside look at the ongoing renovations, and would like to thank the developers for granting us access to the project and showing us just how much time and investment is going into restoring a building with such importance to the town, ensuring that this landmark will be enjoyed for many more decades to come. As we focus on what was being planned for the building, we wanted to give another update, this time on the theater's historic marquee. When the marquee was removed, its future was unknown. In 2021, the sign was donated to the American Sign Museum in Cincinnati, Ohio, where it is currently awaiting restoration. The Ioka marquee is expected to play an important role in the newly expanded wing of the museum, so be sure to continue to follow Exeter TV for this inspiring story. Exeter TV will be back with another update on the Ioka construction activities next spring as the project works towards its expected completion date of late summer to early fall of 2024. If you haven't already watched our first...
Okay, good evening again, and welcome back. Tonight is the January 16, 2024 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting, rather, excuse me. It's also our public hearing, public budget hearing. The board is returning from a brief non-public session, and we will call our regular meeting to order at this time. I'd like to start by introducing the board to my right, Selectwoman Dan Chartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our vice chair, Selectwoman Wally Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
We have our town manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
And also our assistant town manager, Melissa Roy. Respect of town staff in attendance and public in attendance, and certainly good evening to everyone at home watching. We have a lot to cover tonight, so we'll jump right in. The next item on the agenda will be deferred. This is a bid awards for the septic equipment and the Webster Avenue pump station. Mr. Dean, would you take that up at the next meeting, or...
We should have those for the 29th, yes.
Fantastic, okay. The next item is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with the select board with anything they'd like to comment on. We do ask if your comments are relative to an agenda item. You wait until that agenda item comes up, and I will pause briefly to see if there's any public comment. And there's nobody online. Okay, we'll move on from public comment. This evening, we do have a proclamation that Selectwoman Gilman, our clerk, will read. Celebrating National Law Enforcement Day. Selectwoman Gilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. National Law Enforcement Day, January 9, 2024. Whereas annually, annually, starting out just great. Annually, January 9 is nationally recognized as National Law Enforcement Day upon its creation in the year 2015. And whereas multiple organizations worked in collaboration in the creation of National Law Enforcement Day to promote a positive portrayal of police officers among communities and in the news media. And whereas, the day recognizes, appreciates, and supports the over 900,000 officers throughout the United States who have chosen the difficult career path of law enforcement officer. And whereas, law enforcement officers of every rank and file have chosen a profession that puts their life on the line every day for their communities in answering all calls to public service, are often taken away from their families for long hours, and work with local, state, and federal organizations, making communities safer through commanded dedication. Now, therefore, I, the chair of the Town of Exeter, do hereby proclaim and affirm January 9, 2024 as National Law Enforcement Day within the Town of Exeter. All people are hereby called upon to promote gratitude, respect, and support for the law enforcement officers who serve and protect our citizens and uphold the law.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we do have our police chief, Chief Pullen, in attendance this evening. Chief Pullen, thank you very much to you and the department. We're very, very fortunate here in Exeter to have you leading such a stellar department. Your community policing efforts and your other outreach within the community, National Night Out, and just everything that you do to keep us safe day in and day out, we're very appreciative to you and the department. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to recognize very quickly one of our long-term employees in the town clerk's office who will be departing at the end of next week, January 26, Leanne Simpson, who has served in the town clerk's office for over 20 years here in Exeter and has served the public very, very well. Personally, whenever I come in for a meeting with Mr. Dean or department head, and I come through the back door, Leanne's one of the first faces I see, and even when she's with somebody, there's always a smile, a hello, and just one of the most pleasant people that I've ever met. And I wish her the best of health and happiness in her retirement. We are certainly going to miss her. And in typical fashion of Leanne's dedication to the town, she decided to wait a few days to retire so that she could get us through the presidential primary next week. So thank you, Leanne. We're going to miss you, but enjoy your retirement.
You're welcome.
Okay. We have two sets of minutes to approve, the first of which is from our special meeting on December 28, 2023, which was the third public hearing on the land acquisition of 23 Water Street. There were three board members voting that day. We had an opportunity to look at the minutes.
I did. I just have one correction.
Please.
Please. And it's on the second to the last page.
Okay.
Selectwoman Belanger asked if the deed, I asked if it will be filed that afternoon the next day, not that it needs to, but we already know it needed to. So I just need needs to to be replaced with will be, and a question mark at the end of the sentence.
So noted.
Thank you.
Any other revisions or amendments?
No.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the special Exeter Select Board Meeting Minutes of December 28, 2023, as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion seen done? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Here.
Same.
Vote passes 3-0, two abstentions. And we had our regular meeting minutes of January 28, 2024. Are there any amendments or revisions?
Just one.
Please.
Please, Mr. Chair.
Please, Mr. Chair. Page six, Select Board Committee Report. I, or number one. Ms. Belanger said the Housing Board, and I just need that changed to Housing Advisory Committee. Please.
Okay, duly noted. Any other revisions or amendments? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of January 8th, 2024 as amended.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Dean, is Joanna coming this evening or?
She is taking minutes from the video tonight.
Fair, okay, thank you. We have five minutes before we call the public hearing to order. I know what we'll do. Take care of this piece of business. We'll start off this evening with some exciting news. The board met in non-public at 6:30 this evening to go over acquisition of a piece of property that the town manager, the assistant town manager, and Parks and Rec Department have been working very hard on for at least the last year and a half. And this is to purchase the parcel of land that currently houses Planet Playground. In a unique situation, that small parcel of land that's at 4 Hampton Road is owned by, I believe, the business that's in front of it or adjacent to it.
The nursing home adjacent to it.
Yes. Owned by a company in New York, I believe. And then they've offered to engage in negotiations. So this evening, I'm very excited to announce that the Select Board authorized the town manager to sign the purchase and sale agreement to purchase the parcel of land known as Planet Playground. And the Select Board also authorized funds of $50,000 to be utilized from ARPA funds to purchase the property. And that is 100% of the price of the property. And I think very consistent with how this board has used ARPA funds in terms of trying to expend on initiatives or projects or pieces of land in this matter that will be around for decades that can be enjoyed by everybody. So, congratulations, Mr. Dean, to you and Ms. Roy and Mr. Peace on well done.
Thank you.
And you'll keep us posted in the process, please.
I will, and just to reiterate that not many people know that that piece of property has been part of a sublease between the town and the nursing home for many, many, many years. So this is a significant acquisition that the town's been able to take advantage of for a very reasonable price offered by the seller. So we appreciate their indulgence of us in working with us to make that happen.
Terrific. And did you want to take just a quick minute and talk about the grant that the Parks and Rec?
Yes, so right now, the town has applied for a Land Water Conservation Fund grant through the federal government and administered by the state, and that is a grant that we expect will be, if it comes to fruition, will be approximately 50% of the price of the new Planet Playground that's being contemplated. The cost of the playground is $595,000. It is on the town warrant. We are proposing funding through the other part of it through the town surplus, so it wouldn't cost taxpayers any money if the grant was approved and fund balance was used for the remainder of the project, and that will get us a nice new Planet Playground. So that's in process right now, and we expect to hear on the grant probably within the next two weeks or so, if not sooner.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to really put a finer point on how exciting this is because it's been really hard to make plans to develop Planet Playground or improve it. You know, it is a relic of my early time in Exeter, and I love it there. It's really important, you know, it was built by the community, and it was, it's such an important part of our rec camp and, you know, all of the programs that happen there and our children. And it's also, you know, 25 years old and very splintery, and it is not accessible, and it's, you know, all of these different things that we really need to do some significant improvements. So it's a really exciting opportunity to own the land so that we're not worried about it being sold or, you know, what's going to come in there. So I just want to, and I know that this has been in talks, we've been in talks with this for years at this point. So this is a really exciting snowy evening, snowy evening news. And Mr. Chair, if you wanted, I know we've gotten a couple of emails worried about the fact that this meeting is going on. If you could just explain why we were not able to cancel this meeting even because of the weather.
Sure, so the public budget hearing is set by statute. It is the third Tuesday of January, so we could not cancel this due to the weather. However, we do have a Zoom option for those that are not able to make it down. I have, the Zoom invite is on the agenda if you go online, and I'm watching this carefully, and if any hands go up, everybody will have an opportunity to speak, but this is a meeting that we cannot cancel or postpone.
Yeah.
No, keep going. I have a comment on Planet Playground when you're done.
Oh, that was the PSA of the meeting, but?
I want to join Selectwoman Cowan in talking about how important Planet Playground is. I also want to recognize the visionaries. Karen Pryor and many other volunteers really saw the possibility of what could be done there. They did it on a leased piece of property. What they did at the time was amazing, and I want to recognize Karen and the other volunteers that basically put that together. They did the fundraising, they did the construction. It was really remarkable at the time, and I want to recognize Karen and the others. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, well said. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Just a quick reminder that the first session of town meeting, the deliberative session, will be held on Saturday, February 3rd, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the high school. And the second session would be the annual town election, which will be at the Talbot Gym on March 12th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So with that, I'm going to read the first legal notice. Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Exeter, 2024 Bonds. The Exeter Select Board hereby gives notice of a public hearing pursuant to RSA 338A on the following projects regarding bonds and notes as part of the fiscal year 2024 Town Warrant. There are six. The first is a police station and fire substation with a cost of $17,522,500. The second is the school street area reconstruction at a price of $6,510,000. The third is the surface water treatment plant design and engineering, cost of $500,000. The fourth is the Webster Pump Station, additional funding, with a price of $884,000. The fifth is the Water Street Reconstruction at a price of $100,000. And the last, the sixth, is the use of $213,970.70 in excess bond proceeds to fund two police cruisers totaling $120,000 and applying the remaining proceeds, which is $93,970.70, to the current principal payment on current bond issues. This public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, commencing at 7:00 p.m. in the Exeter Town Offices in Novak Room, 10 Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire. The public is encouraged to attend, and this was posted on January 4th, 2024. With that, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the Town of Exeter 2024 Bonds.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is open. We will introduce and read the six bond articles. Staff, if they're here, or Mr. Dean can speak to them, and obviously anybody from the public, while the public hearing is open, can certainly speak or ask questions. Okay, the first is Article Four, Police Station and Fire Substation, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,522,500 for the purpose of design, engineering, and net-zero construction of a new police station and fire substation on Continental Drive, including equipment furnishings and related costs, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $17,522,500 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, and further to authorize the Select Board to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the majority and other terms thereof, and further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, including principal forgiveness, which may become available for this project, and to comply with all laws applicable to such project, and further to authorize the Select Board to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. Debt service to be paid for the general fund, the estimated tax impact, assuming a 20-year bond at a 3.65% interest, is 68 cents per thousand, $68 per 100,000 of assessed property value. Bond payments would begin approximately one year after issuance, and this ballot requires a three-fifth ballot vote for approval. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment or ask questions on this article? I don't see any online either. Mr. Dean, I know Chief Poole is here. Would you, Mr. Stevens, like to comment to this article?
Yeah, I think my basic comment would be that the town proposed an article last year for the same project. It was a little less expensive last year than it is this year. That's not uncommon with capital projects. They tend to increase in cost as the years go by. And the vote last year was very close. It needed 60% to pass. It fell short by 45 votes in a snowstorm during the town election. So we brought it back this year for another walkthrough and hopeful approval of this article. The police station, it's been well documented, is very undersized for a town of our size. It is 6,700 square feet, give or take. The police department needs approximately, this project is approximately 15,000 to 16,000 square feet, would give them much more room. It would be located on Continental Drive. It would give them a new facility. The current police station with the fire station downtown was built in 1978, so it is, it predates a lot of the people that are in this room, and it's past its prime and needs to be replaced. The other part of this is a fire substation. The town has had many studies over the years, and all of them have indicated that a fire and EMS presence on Epping Road makes perfect sense, given the layout and the topography of the town and the way the roads are. So we have proposed this as a preferred option of many different alternatives that we've been studying for the past few years as a new police station and a fire substation. So we're hopeful to see approval for this.
And I would also invite those who have not gone on the town website, there is a 15- or 16-minute video that the town produced sometime in October, I believe, including Mr. Dean and the fire chiefs and police chiefs. And we go through the details of this proposal. And while the facts and the figures are being given, you can actually see the present facility and just how outdated it is, how cramped it is. It's not ADA compliant. There are just so many needs right now that that building that was built in 1978 cannot accommodate. The town has grown. The needs of our citizens have grown from our public safety, and I would just encourage everybody, it's a 15- or 16-minute video. We do plan to show it at deliberative session, but it is on our website, so for those that haven't watched it, I would invite you to do so. Mr. Chartren?
For my first turn on the Select Board, I always had a very ghost-like approach on a public safety complex. I felt like we never quite had the right plan. I really believe this is the right plan. I embrace this wholeheartedly. I will be voting for it. I urge the citizens of the town to vote for this. We need this facility. It also has the virtue of both the police and fire department have not added any personnel in their budgets this year to sort of, you know, ramp up to this additional facility. We are bursting at the seams on Court Street, and we need this space just for the existing staff that we have. So I urge the town to vote for this. This is a good plan, and I, for many years, I wanted to put the brakes on the plan, but this is the right one. Let's get it passed.
Thank you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't include that the Budget Recommendations Committee voted to recommend this project as well.
Can I just make one other point? Keep in mind that in 1978, the high school was not where it is now. So this will help. Sorry, my voice is going to go in and out. I'm trying to avoid it, but it will help with response time on that area of town and especially our high school. So for me, that is a really important factor, along with everything else that's been mentioned tonight and mentioned in the last year or so over this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We are both chiefs here. I don't know if there's anything either of you would like to add? I would have to.
I think Mr. Dean said it very well himself, a laborer in a long evening, but thank you for the offer.
Okay, great. Anybody else? No?
No, everybody's already explained, and I think that the video is quite comprehensive and gives you the reasons why we are asking and need to do this project. You know, growing up here, I remember where the police station used to was and the fire station, and the brand-new building when it opened up was quite celebrated, and we have grown and grown. At the time, it was built, there were maybe 9,000 residents, and now there are over 15,000 residents. So we've almost doubled but kept the building the same size. I think that speaks volumes for why we need to spread out a little more and give some elbow room to our officers and their equipment and Mabel. Mabel needs a new home.
Okay, thank you for that. If there's no other comments from the board, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article Four, Police Station and Fire Substation, in the amount of $17,522,500.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,510,000 for the purpose of construction of water, sewer, and drainage improvements in the school street area, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $6,510,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provision of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, and further to authorize the Select Board to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the maturity and other terms thereof, and further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, including principal forgiveness, which may become available for this project, and to comply with all laws applicable to such projects, and further to authorize the Select Board to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. The town anticipates receiving 35% debt forgiveness from New Hampshire DES to offset a portion of the sewer cost of this project. Debt services will be paid from the general fund and notwithstanding the general obligation nature of the bonds or notes, it is anticipated that debt service will also be paid from the water fund and sewer fund. The estimated tax impact, assuming a 15-year bond at 3.3% interest, is 10 cents per thousand, $10 per 100,000 of assessed property value. Bond payments would begin approximately one year after issuance, and a three-fifth ballot vote is required for approval. Any questions or comments from the public? And no questions online? Seeing that, Mr. Dean, I'll bring it back to you with town staff to speak to this?
Sure, so it's School Street, Cassuth Street, Union Street. Those are all areas of the town that really need a good amount of water, sewer, infrastructure, and drainage, infrastructure improvements. Those are aged lines out there and certainly could use upgrades. They're well past their prime. In some instances, 40, 50-year-old lines, if not... In some instances, forty, fifty-year-old lines, if not older than that. So one of the major pieces of this project is obviously the thirty-five percent debt forgiveness from the NHDES on the sewer portion of the project. That helps us in terms of our sewer rate to keep that stable. That will be paid back straight from DES, and you can see that the tax impacts, ten dollars per hundred thousand of assessed property value. That's because the road and the drainage piece is actually on the general fund and not the water or sewer funds. And this goes with a series of projects we've been doing, including West Side Drive. People that are out in the town know that we've been in different neighborhoods in the past several years doing water and sewer line upgrades, so this is another one of those areas of town that really has a need.
And I'd like to add that the voters over the last several years have been very giving in their votes so that we can improve the infrastructure a little bit at a time, and I just applaud the DPW and their master plan and how they've gone to attack this on an annual basis, little at a time.
A recent project is the Salem Street Project, so if you're familiar with that one, that was a water, sewer, drainage improvement project that went very well and upgraded the neighborhood. The neighborhood looks fantastic as a result, both above ground and below ground, where you can't see.
Any questions or comments from the, Mr. Shartrun?
I am a firm believer in our continuing to put water and sewer and infrastructure projects on the ballot. This is very important. It's great for maintaining property values. We've seen some surrounding towns who have not kept up with their water and sewer, and they've had to go into a panic mode, and I love the fact that we are doing this step by step. We put something on the ballot annually, pretty much, and it's just a great way to continue to improve our infrastructure. I will be voting for this project, and I urge my fellow citizens to vote for it as well. It's a way to keep improving the water and sewer system and continuing to provide the miracle of water and sewer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'm just going to add, number one, for anybody at home or in the room who doesn't know this, our CIPs are always on our website, and this is what the Budget Recommendation Committee uses when they vet the budget every year before it comes to us and then to the public to vote on. And in these CIPs, it explains the history, why it's needed, and things like that, so it's really important for people if you want to go read these projects, see information there. But this, I just want to add that in 2015, an assessment management plan, put this as a high priority because of the age and the small size of the pipes, the deficiencies. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article Five, School Street Area Design Reconstruction, at a price of six million, five hundred and ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero. The next is Article Six, Webster Ave Pump Station, at a price of two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and thirteen thousand and three hundred dollars for the purpose of replacement of the Webster Ave Sewer Pump Station, and to authorize the issuance of not more than two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, and further to authorize the Select Board to issue, negotiate, sell and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity of other terms thereof, and further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain and accept federal, state or other aid, if any, including principal forgiveness, which may become available for this project, and to comply with all laws applicable to such project, and further to authorize the Select Board to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. Without impairing the general obligation nature of the bonds or the notes, it is anticipated that debt service will be paid by the Sewer Fund. Bond payments would begin approximately one year after issuance. This appropriation is in addition to the five million, seven hundred thousand dollars in bonding authority approval by Article Three of the 2020 Town Meeting. Three-fifth ballot vote is required for approval. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, Mr. Dean?
So my comment on this article is that this was eight hundred and eighty-four thousand when we started. We had a bid opening at your last meeting, if you recall that. We do have a bid price for the construction now, which came in approximately four-point-four million dollars, and we'll be looking to award that at your meeting on the 29th. We still do need a little bit more money in order to finish this project, so that's why this warrant article is on the ballot to begin with, and the two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred will get us over the finish line.
Great. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to recommend Article Six, Webster Ave Pump Station, at a price of two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
Two hundred and thirteen, three hundred.
I'm sorry, two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars. Thank you.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero. The next one is Article Seven, Surface Water Treatment Plan Design Engineering, at a price of five hundred thousand dollars, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of design and engineering of a new surface water treatment plan, and to authorize the issuance of not more than five hundred thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, and further to authorize the Select Board to issue, negotiate, sell and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity and other items thereof, and further to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain and accept federal, state or other aid, if any, including principal forgiveness, which may become available for this project, and to comply with all laws applicable to such project, and further to authorize the Select Board to take any other action or pass any other vote relative thereto. Without impairing the general obligation nature of the bonds or notes, it is anticipated that debt service will be paid from the Water Fund. Bond payments would begin approximately one year after issuance, and a three-fifth ballot vote is required for approval. Open it up to the public for any questions or comments. Seeing none, and no one online, I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments or questions? Mr. Dean, did you want to speak to this briefly?
Yes. Basically, this would be in the initial stages of looking at a new surface water treatment plan, as the article describes. Five hundred thousand, we felt, was an appropriate number to get us through schematic design alternatives analysis for the current site that we're on off of Portsmouth Ave. The current surface water plant, again, is old. The last time it had any kind of a major upgrade was 1993. We've done some filter work, some clarifier work in the last few years, but it's a challenge, certainly, to make water from the raw water that comes in from the Exeter River to the reservoir and directly into the plant. So again, this is one of those projects that's well past due. I'm happy to announce that we have a new Public Works Director here that has a water background, so I think he'll be very valuable in the process as it unfolds and we get to the answers that we need. So that's what the five hundred thousand dollars will get us going on.
Great, thank you.
Can I just add, just to keep in mind, the original construction was 1905. It was upgraded in 1924, 1972, and in 1992, so I think we need to definitely look at options for improvement on that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing no other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article Seven, Surface Water Treatment Plan Design and Engineering, at a price of five hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I would just like to recognize that for these bond articles that we've been talking about, these ones, and over the past several years, we've been able to get a really excellent interest rating. Mr. Dean tries very hard to find, stop at a good time, stop looking at a good time to get a good rate, so we should be proud of that and remember that when we're voting on these, or trust us with that when we vote on these.
That is an excellent point, thank you. Be with me one moment, please. Okay. Russ, did I miss one?
Yeah, you still have Article Eight.
I know, I've got Article Eight, but I didn't miss one.
No.
Okay, great. Article Eight, excess construction proceeds, police vehicle purchase, for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in principal payments on outstanding bond issues, and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents. To see if the town will vote to authorize the expenditure of the unused portion of the bonds approved in 2011 for the great dam design and water sewer line replacement, and in 2012 for wastewater treatment facility design and JD Hill utilities totaling two hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents as follows. To raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the purchase of two police vehicles for RSA 33:3A2, the remaining unused bond proceeds, ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents, to be applied to the principal payment on the great dam removal bond issued in 2014. The estimated tax impact is none, and a three-fifth ballot vote is required for approval. Any questions or comments from the public? No one online, we'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Dean, did you want to speak to this briefly?
Sure. So as the article states, we have a couple of, three projects actually listed that where we did the project and we closed it out, and we had a surplus of funds available. We had borrowed for the projects through the bond bank like we normally would, or through the bond bank for these projects, and the money sits in the town's accounts until something is done with it. And what this proposes is that we would use the excess proceeds for two purposes. One is to buy two police vehicles, which we do need, and we're part of the original budget submittal by the police department, so by using these proceeds to buy these vehicles, it would mean no cost to the taxpayer. The other piece is the ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents, which would be left in the excess bond proceeds. We'd apply that to the principal payment on the great dam removal bond. We are still paying that bond down, we're almost paid off, but we would use these proceeds against that borrowing, again, so we could save money for the taxpayers.
Thank you.
In order to reassign purposes to excess bond proceeds, it requires a warrant article, which is why it's before the town tonight to consider.
Great, thank you. Mr. Shartrun?
I want to recognize our Finance Director, Mr. Stevens, for helping to conceive of this warrant article, along with the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager. Great work, Corey, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend to the voters Article Eight, excess construction proceeds for police vehicle purchase in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in principal payments on outstanding bond issues, the amount of ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents. So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. The motion by Selectman Shartrun, and the second by Selectwoman Cowan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero. I would now entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the Town of Exeter 2024 Bonds.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Public hearing on the bonds is closed. Our next legal notice I will read into the record. Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Exeter 2024 Operating Budget. The Exeter Select Board hereby gives notice of a public hearing on the Town of Exeter Fiscal Year 2024 Operating Budget and all financial and other warrant articles on Tuesday, January 16, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Novak Room of the Exeter Town Offices. This hearing will be held pursuant to RSA 32:5 and RSA 40:13, and this was dated and posted December 22, 2023. At this time, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the Town of Exeter 2024 Operating Budget.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, the public hearing is open. The first three articles are not discussed this evening. Our first article is obviously all of the elections for elected officials. Article Two and Article Three respectively are zoning amendments, and we discuss the bond articles that went from four through eight. Article Nine is to elect town officers, and that brings us to Article Ten, which is the 2024 Operating Budget, which I will read, and then, Mr. Dean, I believe you have a presentation for us, correct?
I do.
Great. Article Ten, 2024 Operating Budget, shall the Town of Exeter raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget, posted with the warrant, or as amended by vote of the first session, for the purposes set forth therein totaling twenty-two million, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be twenty-two million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Town of Exeter, or by law, or by the governing body, may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, Roman numeral ten, and Roman numeral sixteen, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. Majority vote is required. Mr. Dean?
Yes, and the estimated tax impact for this is twenty-nine cents per thousand of assessed value. I wanted to also mention, before we even dive into the budget process, that the town budget, for those of you who are watching at home and are in attendance tonight, represents about twenty-three percent of your tax bill. So the rest is schools, both local education, co-op education, and county. So everything that you see here tonight, you may say to yourself, well, it's a lot, and it is a lot, but it does represent less than twenty-five percent of your tax bill. So going into the town budget and warrant process, in August and September, the town departments prepare their preliminary budget, and they'll submit it to our office for review. In September, the Town Manager forwards a preliminary budget over to the Select Board, who then refers it to the Budget Recommendations Committee, along with the capital improvement requests. Selectwoman Blanger made reference to our capital improvement plan a little bit earlier, and that is something that we include in part of the financial schematic as we develop the budget in the fall of the year prior to when it's voted. In October, the town receives our health insurance rating, which is obviously a big piece of our budget, and we adjust our budgets accordingly. This year, the health insurance budget for the town increased by ten percent, so it was quite a bit of an increase in that regard. In October, November, the Budget Recommendations Committee and subcommittees meet and make their recommendations to the Select Board, and then the Select Board takes up the budget in December, discuss it, and they finalize the budget for the proposal that you're hearing here tonight at the Budget and Bond Hearing, and then also for the deliberative session on February 3 of this year, which is Saturday at the high school at nine o'clock in the morning. We do record it, and we stream it live, so if you're not able to make it, you can watch it, but we encourage everybody who's, you have to be a registered voter to participate, and we ask all of our registered voters if you can make it to come and participate in the process, because it is pure democracy in action, one person, one vote, and there's a lot that happens at deliberative session. Then Tuesday, March 12, we have what we call the Second Session of Town Meeting, which is the town vote on the operating budgets and warrant articles, and that's at the Talbot Gym on Linden Street. The format for the budget, there are three separate operating budget warrant articles. The three major funds are the General Fund, Water Fund, and Sewer Fund. The warrant articles are in a required format under the RSA, so we don't make up the language that's on the warrant. It is there because the statutes require it to be that way. And then each operating budget has its own default budget, so if the operating budget is voted down, the default budget goes into effect at that point. Proud to say that we have had very good luck with our budgets over the years, and I believe we've had one default budget in my tenure here since 2005. In that particular year, the default budget in the General Fund was higher than the actual operating budget, so some signals got crossed on the... So some signals got crossed on the voting in that year, perhaps. The CIP financial articles stand alone for a separate vote on the warrant, and then we submit the budget on the approved budget forms, which are right here on the table for anybody who wants to take a draft with them when they leave. Then the warrant is posted on January 29, and that is posted around town to warn voters about the upcoming deliberative session in town voting. So the chair read the operating budget article, so I won't read it again. But basically, as it says here, the total proposal is $22,862,862 for FY '24. This is a little bit of the budget history. You can see these budgets are from FY '20 to '23, and the tax rate in the past several years from 2018 up to 2023. In 2019, there was a revaluation of town property, so you can see the tax rate dropped quite a bit. When we had that revaluation, we actually have a revaluation scheduled for 2024 as well. So everything you see here is subject to change based upon that valuation. Not everything. The budget would stay constant, but with the values changing, the tax rate projections could change as a result of that. General Fund discussion. The budget includes all major town operating departments, the general government functions you can see there, financial administration, planning and building, economic development, our boards and committees for land use, police, fire, and EMS, communications and health. The DPW General Fund budget, which has five different divisions in it, six different divisions, sorry. Administration, highways and streets, snow removal, solid waste, streetlights, and stormwater. The DPW Maintenance Division with all of the town buildings, including our utility budgets. Welfare Human Services Agency funding, parks and rec, other culture rec, which is a very small budget but pays for important events like the town fireworks display at the American Independence Museum Festival and our Memorial Day ceremonies. The Public Library budget. And the Debt Service and Capital budget then includes lease purchases of vehicles and equipment that we've had prior approval for from the voters. There's also a Benefits and Taxes budget, which is where we budget townwide expenses like workers' comp, unemployment, and our health buyout, which is a benefit that we offer our employees. The town gets a benefit from the employee buying out of the health insurance, and we offer them 30% of the town savings from the buyout as a result of participating in that program. So our largest three departments are police, fire, EMS, and DPW. These budgets make up approximately 63%, 63.8% of the total Town General Fund operating budget. In this budget going forward, and I will talk to this issue for briefly, we've tried very hard to retain our employees and incentivize our employees in an economy that's just very different. Certainly, we've had challenges filling positions. I think if you're on social media, you're on the website, you've seen that the town has had a lot of hiring issues in the past two to three years even in our different departments. So we are working hard to incentivize people to stay, and one of the ways that we can do that is through competitive wages. So we had a wage adjustment that is impacting this FY '24 budget. And we are proposing in addition to that that the step adjustment of 3% be included in the budget and a cost of living adjustment of 2% for eligible non-union employees in July. Sorry for that typo there, but the union contracts are settled through this cycle, so those are already in place. And there are no other obligations for those contracts except for what's already been approved. The benefits, health insurance increase, 10% for all plans I talked about. Employee contributions to health plans you can see there. That is what our employees are contributing to each of our plans by employee group. And then the retirement costs for Group One, it's 13.53% of payroll. Group One employees also participate in Social Security. Group Two, our police, which contribute 31.28% of payroll. The town contributes 31.28%. Fire, 30.35% of payroll. And like the note says, Group One participates in Social Security, and Group Two does not. So just looking at some of the budget notes, the select board, there's a special expense increase of $1,500 in that budget to $5,000. It's a fairly nominal budget, but it's an important budget that pays for a lot of things that come up during the year that we wouldn't otherwise be budgeting for. And the town manager, there is a new town manager contract funding for the new town manager contract in that budget. Also, the senior executive assistant position in our office is now budgeted 100% in the town manager budget. It used to be split at 84% in the town manager budget, 16% welfare budget. One of the things that we're proposing in this budget is a new part-time welfare position that will take on those duties and responsibilities that have grown in the past few years especially, and take it away from the senior executive assistants duties. Information technology, there's an increase in the phone utilization bill of $10,200, an increase of software agreement of $1,700, and a corresponding reduction in network supplies of $4,000. Media communications, that's a new budget for FY '24, and the total budget includes the former IT XTV technician position reclassified to Media Communications Coordinator. His name is Bob Glawacki. You may have heard that name around town. Bob does a really great job. He handles all of our social media and our web content and is excellent at doing that. And so this total budget, including expenses, is $65,691. The town clerks budget, there's an increase in health insurance. Part of that is because we've had employee retirements, as you heard earlier tonight. With turnover, we have to budget a family plan for health insurance, so that increases the budget. And then additional training funds of $1,000 for that budget. Elections increase. There are four elections in FY '24 versus one in FY '23, so the elections budget increases accordingly 59.5%, 9,238. I will point out too that the supervisors of the checklist and our poll workers are making very, very little for what they do, and so this is probably a good opportunity to say thank you to them. They make $10 an hour or less to do what they do, and they do an extraordinary job for us. So just wanted to point that out. It's a small budget, but obviously it has a big return and is very important to the town. In the finance budget, we have an increase in audit fees of $1,410. There's an increase in Gatsby reporting requirements. Those change consistently, and we're being hit with another one, so that's $5,600. And then there's an increase in the software agreement and inflationary increase from Munis, our payroll and accounting software of $2,154. The treasurer is a level-funded budget, so there are no changes there. Tax collection, there's an increase in postage, $1,500. Postage is going up again, has gone up again. And we're proposing an increase of $1,500 in the lien deed search increase. Also, there's been a reclassification of the deputy tax collector position to put it more in line with market, and a reduction in health insurance corresponding to that of $8,561. So the overall budget increase there is 2.9%. The assessing budget has a small increase for our contract assessor services, and an increase in the mapping budget. That's for our tax maps, our contract with our vendor. And then an increase in the postage budget for revaluation that I mentioned earlier, $3,800, and an increase in the revaluation budget of $9,999. That was a $1 budget. It's now $10,000. That's why the number looks odd. That is for Riverwoods. The town had a settlement agreement on a tax case about two years ago, and we're working with an independent appraiser to work to value Riverwoods. So that's why we need to budget that amount of money in there. On the expense side in planning, the wage benefit increases. They're a 5.5%. Those are basic increases for wages and benefits. Economic development, there's a small decrease in, a small decrease in expenses for our single employee in that department, rooms and meals, 1,300 education training, travel reimbursement, increases in wages and benefits of $10,534 corresponding to that. Then in building and code enforcement, there's an increase in contracted services of $15,000 for electrical inspections. We've reduced the part-time position of electrical inspector and brought it off the books for now. So therefore, there's an overall budget reduction. We have had a really hard time filling our part-time electrical inspector position, so we have opted to try another route and do it through a contract services agreement for FY '24, and hopefully that works out. If not, we'll probably be back for FY '25 to try to reestablish that position again. Then the Conservation Commission is a small reduction from the '23 budget. It's a small budget to begin with. The Zoning Board budget is level-funded with FY '23, Historic District Commission level fund, and Heritage Commission FY '24 budget's $1,109. So those are all volunteer boards with volunteer-sized budgets. Moving on to police, any questions from so far? Okay. So police, some of our larger budgets. Police, part-time wages increased $80,522 for prosecutor services. We've reduced contracted services. What happened there was we had a full-time employee who was doing our prosecutorial work, who is retiring. So when that employee retired, he was rehired as a part-time prosecutor, and that is a service that the town needs to have. And we are grateful that Patrick Mulholland agreed to continue on with being the town's part-time prosecutor. And this is the budget delta that you're seeing in the change from going from the contracted services to the part-time police prosecutor. Then we also had a health insurance budget increase in that department of 19.2%. Police equipment purchase increased $46.54, fuel increase of $1,686, general expense increase of $1,500, and software agreement increases of $39.04. So you can see inflation is hitting our budgets as well. It's definitely hitting some of the line items. Police overall budget increased 6.5% over FY '23. In fire, the health insurance increase is 18.2%. Again, even though health insurance went up 10%, we have plan changes. People go from a single to a family plan. That impacts the health insurance budgets. And there's a retirement decrease corresponding in that budget of $15,147. Fire expenses, command supplies increased $1,500, contract services increased $37.53, and that's due to IT support that is specific to police and fire. There's a dues increase of $1,396. Again, organizations increasing dues as part of the budget. The fire prevention supplies increase of $11.57, fuel increase of $11.99, hydrant maintenance fee reallocated to townwide expenses. So in this instance, the water department, the General Fund has been paying a portion of the water suppression, fire suppression, a portion of the water system that's dedicated to fire suppression. And we had a consultant look at this, and they actually told us that we should be paying probably $700,000 out of the General Fund representing that cost. And we're trying to build up to that over time. But right now, we're proposing $20,000. There's a $20,000 decrease in this budget, and then there's an overall budget increase that I'll get to later that represents the first-year payment of that fee for the overall budget. So the fire overall budget increase is 3.5%. In dispatch, the health insurance increase is 63.9% or $41,018. Again, plan changes will influence that. And the dispatch overall budget increase is 9.5%. There are no new personnel. It's just the impact of wages and benefit changes based upon plan changes with health insurance. And then fire health budget, there's a reduction in health insurance in that budget of $26,185, so the overall budget is a decrease, 15.8% or $24,360. We have a single full-time health officer. Madison Bailey is her name. She just started, actually, about, I think, two months ago. Maybe a little longer than that. General Fund budget notes for Public Works. Any questions on police and fire? Okay. So expenses for General Fund Public Works. In the Admin Engineering Division, there's an increase in full-time wages for reclassifications, hire of a new DPW director, also a full-year funding of our GIS technician position. We haven't been able to fill that yet, so if you know anybody who would be a good candidate, send them our way, or her. We'll be happy to talk to them. Overall budget increase in that division is $115,000 or 25.1%. In highways and streets, I'm going to look twice at this. Full-time wage increases $39,920, reduction in health insurance of $49,030, increase in tree maintenance $35,535, and reductions in asphalt reclamation $5,000, culvert repairs replacement $1,000, fuel $3,000. Overall General Fund, general expense increase with all those categories, $27,535. And then the paving budget, we've reduced that to $550,000. It's typically $700,000. But we do have road aid from the state that has been given to the town, so we're able to plug that with road aid, and we will do that in FY '24 with that money, making the paving budget whole. Then the culvert replacement budget's been reduced by $5,000. There's a change, that capital outlay increase of $50,000 for tree equipment. The board at their last meeting voted to approve ARPA funds to be used for that $50,000 of tree equipment, so that has come out of the budget. The snow and ice budget is an increase of 0.5% over FY '23. Solid waste contract goes up every year. This year is no exception, so it's up $73,500. That's a CPI-driven increase. So that is up by that amount. There's a reduction in brush grinding and an increase in landfill monitoring, which has become more complicated in recent years as we do more and more monitoring on our closed landfills, including Cross Road and Powder Mill Road. So that overall increase is totaling 84.905 or 6% over FY '23. Then DPW streetlights and stormwater both have level-funded budgets, same as FY '23. On the streetlights budget, we're going into our last year. We bought the streetlights from Unitil five years ago, and by next year, you will see a savings of approximately $30,000 in that budget as we pay off the book value of the streetlights, and we're able to return that money back and be able to reduce that budget by $30,000 or so. So it's good news there for FY '25. Okay, DPW maintenance, full-time wages reduced by $47,830. We've reduced one full-time position out of that, that of the HVAC plumber position. We could not, again, we marketed that position. We posted it. We just could not get anybody for three years running, so we took it out of the budget. There's a reduction in health insurance of $11,177, and there's a reduction in the fire safety expense budget from $18,000 to $15,000. That's a $3,000 reduction. And it looks like might be a, I can't think of a, I'm thinking of a bad pun, alarming to some people, but it's not. It's based on historical spend. So we looked at that account closely and brought it down to 15. The town buildings accounts, electricity, natural gas, building maintenance, those are a very small $4 increase over the FY '23 budget. So I want to put a marker down on the electricity budget. We very fortunately have had a very good electricity contract where we're paying 7.74 cents per kilowatt hour for supply. We've been paying that since 2021. We will be paying that through 2025, so our electricity costs have been very stable. And then by 2025, this new solar array, which we'll talk about in a bit, will hopefully be online. And once that happens, we'll be selling electricity. So we should be benefiting even more, and we should see this budget decrease considerably if that comes into play. The maintenance projects budget, it's level-funded with the FY '23 budget of $100,000. That's our annual allocation to do small capital projects around town with maintenance funds. We always have something that breaks and we need to fix it. The Town Hall Sewer is a good example of that, so that is part of that budget. Then the DPW garage, there's an increase in wages of $8,140 or 5%. Increase in benefits of $72.50 or 7.1%. And then the DPW garage overall budget increase is 5.4%. And that is DPW. Moving on to welfare human services, part-time wages, there's an increase of $39,651 for one part-time welfare human services administrator position. That would be nine months of funding at 30 hours per week. And again, I mentioned it earlier, but we're moving, the proposal is to move that operation out of the town manager's office and move it into a separate position, preferably a candidate with a human services background that has experience in case management would be ideal. That's what we're looking for. And again, this would provide nine months of funding for that position. Then we, at 30 hours per week, it is part-time. And then we would evaluate if we can get it filled, great. If we can't, we may look at another method of filling the position, but we're optimistic we can get somebody in the position for the rate that we're offering and for the hours per week that we're offering.[1783.04] the hours per week that we're offering. So that's that. The human services agency funding, this is reviewed by our human services funding committee. They've recommended $98,325. This is a reduction of $285 from FY '23. This agency funding goes for a number of different organizations that support the town. Because we are funding these organizations, we are not spending some of those funds on welfare-related expenses. So there is a quid pro quo in a lot of ways between the organizations that we work with in terms of the town and not having to pay this in other ways. Parks and recreation budget, the wage benefits increase of $45,856 or 11.7% over FY '23, and that's due mainly to reclassifications of personnel. Then the parks budget is, there's a budget increase in contracted services of $11,340, full-time wages $6717, benefits $11,340, and the total parks budget increase is 12.8% $28,467 over FY '23. Again, we've recognized the need in the parks area to be able to contract more frequently, to mow more frequently, and do more maintenance out in the town to keep our parks up, and that's what the increase in contracted services represents there. Then the other culture and recreation special events, there's an increase in veterans activities of $500. That would go to the memorial parade event expenses, total budget $34,500. And then the library increase is 1.1%, so it's a very small increase, $13,369. Total FY '24 budget, $1,185,689. We're almost at the end. General fund debt service, this is one of the larger increases in the budget. It's $571,684 or 38.2% over FY '23. The projects for that, and especially the new ones, are the solar array, which I'll explain. The solar array, the debt service is being paid for the general fund for FY '24, but we expect, and there's a warrant article that sets up a revolving fund. So what we will expect is when we build the array and we get a federal grant from the federal government, which we're expecting to get, of over $1 million, that will reimburse the general fund. So that will happen, but for right now, it is parked, the debt service is parked in the general fund. Intersection improvements program, that's going on. That includes the roundabout at Pine Street, Front Street, and Linden Street. The West Side Drive Design and Construction, that's a $6 million project. This is the general fund piece. The library addition renovation that occurred recently is in the debt service budget. The Epping Road and Water Tank, as part of that project, that's an older project from 2009 that is in its last phases of being paid for, and then the Lincoln Street Project Phase 1 and 2. In the general government section, there's an increase of $100,000 to account for the fire protection fee, the general fund portion of support for fire, of fire suppression system, supported by the public water system. So again, that's a fee that's paid by the general fund to the water fund. That represents the amount of fire suppression breadth of our water system to pay specifically for fire suppression. It's a calculation that's done by engineers, and they give us a technical document that explains the cost allocation and how that works. And again, they said it should be closer to $700,000, but we're trying to start slow and build it up over years instead of just asking for all $700,000 right out of the gate. The general fund vehicle replacement and leases, that's a budget that is $248,495. That's a reduction from 19,000, of $19,771, and that's a, that just means that our lease purchases have been paid down, so we're having less to pay for in FY '24. The general fund townwide expenses, workers' comp, health buyout, unemployment, property liability, the total budget for that is $528,434. There's an increase of $25,469 or 5.1% over the FY '23 budget of $502,966. And then I do have a typo in the final number, and it is 2286862. So 2286862, and that represents changes that were made at the last select board meeting. Okay. So, Mr. Chair, where would you like to go from here?
A couple of quick notes. First of all, to recognize the work that the Budget Recommendations Committee performed with your executive team, comprised of you and Assistant Town Manager Roy and Finance Director Corey Stevens, worked very diligently and vigorously vetted every budget line with each of their respective department heads, understanding that the wage reclassification was going to increase this budget. And they did a phenomenal job of trying to pare down the budget without cutting any services. And even as you alluded to at the last board meeting, the board found a way to use ARPA funds and the road aid money to further take out of the budget. It's important to note, though, and we've been saying this all along this year, a couple of things. This is not a problem exclusive to Exeter. It's certainly not a problem exclusive to municipalities in New Hampshire. I mean, it's widespread. Municipalities, both in New Hampshire, New England, and really all across the country, are facing the same problem, and that is retention of employees and recruiting employees to come in for folks that retire. Wage reclassification hasn't been done in Exeter since 2014, so that's almost 10 years that the wages remain stagnant. The select board approved funds to have a third-party consultant come in and look at our wage classification and compare it to other towns that are like-sized in New Hampshire. This was done very methodically and very carefully and very fairly. The cost to recruit and replace, and then have to recruit and replace again, is far greater than fairly reclassifying wages for long-term employees who have really performed well in Exeter. And I think that the board agreed that retention of our employees that we have in recruitment and keeping the employees that we recruit was important, and again, far less costly than continuing to have to replace and have vacancies. And the last note, I wanted to get back, there's only one position that's being proposed in this budget. It's a part-time position. Mr. Dean spoke to it very thoroughly, and that is for the human services employee. That's actually bringing back a part-time position that was here not too long ago, what, about six or seven years ago?
Correct.
Maybe eight. And when that individual left, the senior executive assistant at the time took on that role because they were able to perform the function without interfering with the work and the job duties that they currently held. But times have changed, particularly during the pandemic and post-pandemic, and with everything else that's going on. We have been tracking over the last eight months the time spent between the hours that this employee is working now for the human services as opposed to the senior executive assistant, and the hours dictate that we consider bringing back that part-time position. I just wanted to note that.
Yeah, very good.
Did you have anything else in your presentation, or?
I just briefly wanted to cover, there was a slide here that I would like to cover. One is just looking at the, in terms of our revenue categories and estimates. So our main sources of general fund revenue are motor vehicle registration fees, meals and rooms tax, building permits, blue bag solid waste fees, other department income, highway block grant aid, and prior year fund balance. And the total revenues we're expecting to apply to this budget in FY '24, $8,872,315. So our total budget estimate you see for FY '24, $22,868,62. And total taxes estimated to be raised by the FY '24 operating budget, which is the delta between those two numbers, $13,988,547. And the total tax is raised by the FY '23 budget, $13,229,888. So those are all estimates, but they are refined estimates that we work through our finance department and our assistant town manager and myself work very carefully on, and that's what we can expect if, all things being equal, what happens in the ensuing year. But again, we're also, I wanted to point out, there's another slide here that I'll find. I'd call people's attention to the bottom of this, bottom of this slide, which is, this is looking at Article 10 again, and the budgetary increase of 7.2%. And the budget tax rate projection, including the overlay veterans credits, is 673. Our current rate is 623. But you can see below that, it says, "This assumes a 1% increase in net taxable valuation established September 2023. Our latest median assessment ratio is 64% of market." So that means we are going to see property values escalate substantially. So this number, we've run some, we've run some numbers on, based upon what we may see for a revaluation, and if the revaluation takes place the way we think it will, then we could see the rate drop at close to $2,000. So that, that's just a little bit of a preview of coming attractions, but we base this estimate on the 1% increase that we customarily applied of values.
Could you just let people know what that 64% represents? Because by law, it has to be within a delta. What's that delta?
90 to 110%.
So that's how much we're off right now?
Right. So that is, that is value to market as to what's happening out there in the, in the real estate market compared to assessments, so.
So a quick question. If you could go back to that slide.
Sorry about that.
That one. Budget increase over FY '23, 7.2%. Or, yeah, 7.2%. How much of that is due to our attempts to retain and fill, retain existing employees and fill, fill empty positions?
Wages represent about $630,000 of that increase.
So of the dollar increase of 1534,581.
Yeah.
About a, a little over a third of it. Forty percent of it is driven by our retention efforts and our efforts to fill empty positions.
And union contract positions as well.
Yeah.
Increase.
So that, that's really what's driving a big chunk of that increase. Normally, the Budget Recommendation Committee shoots to have no more than an increase of 3% to 4%, but the board made a decision that retaining and finding new employees was more important than hitting that historical marker. So for those of you that kind of pay attention to what the percentage increase is year-over-year on budget, we made a conscious decision to, to go to 7.2% because we did not want to have empty departments. We saw a number of surrounding towns that had runs on different departments and their employees, and they were virtually wiped out in terms of having employees. We did not want to face that. Our town employees are very important. They're what make this operation go. They're one of the things that makes this town unique, and we made, again, a conscious decision to, to drive that increase by, by trying to retain and then fill empty positions. So it was a very conscious thing. It's not a, like, oh my God, this just happened. We knew what was going to happen, and, and we asked the voters to back our efforts to have a full roster of town employees for these essential services.
Thank you.
I would like to add on to selectman chart trends, or maybe not even add on, but back up and, or dumbel down on selectman chart trends comments. At the State House, I work with many different select board and school board members from different, from all over the state, and they're having the same crisis of keeping and retaining their personnel. And I actually saw an argument between two people because one poached a policeman from the other. And that, you know, there's a lot of that going around, and it's, it's very difficult. And even into, into the other New England states where we're competing with, even though we have no sales tax, no income tax, we don't pay as much in, in salary as states around us. So this was very important to me also, that we have sufficient funds to be attractive to employees that we can keep, who have the knowledge that we need and the knowledge that they can grow, and then we can keep them because succession is better than total replacement, and, and somebody with experience is going to cost more than someone that's in the school. So that, again, was my driving force also.
Well, and I would love to just add, you know, I agree with what my colleagues have said on the, on the board here, but I, you know, I do think it is something that warrants a little bit more explanation from us, you know? And you just see the implications of not having fully-staffed departments when we have a major snowstorm, and two days later, the sidewalks aren't cleared, and our kids are not able to safely wait for the bus. So I think, you know, this is something that I feel really strongly about. I think our community members see the impacts, especially when, you know, we don't have a fully-staffed DPW through, you know, because, because of this, you know, specific reason. And I really want to commend our departments who have done a lot with a lot of, you know, with, with real gaps, and I don't think it is safe or what we want as a community to run the risk of, you know, being in real trouble or causing some sort of accident. So I, you know, it, it, these numbers are a little hard to swallow sometimes, but I think when you dig in just, just one little layer, you can really see why we've decided to, you know, unanimously really endorse this, this plan.
Yeah, I agree. And the other thing we really seriously factored in was retention was really important. You have to factor in the cost of new hires and training. So we worked very hard and diligently on this reclassification.
We did.
Yeah.
And it hadn't been done in 10 years.
Right. It was overdue.
And the labor shortage, again, is not just exclusive here, and, you know, geographically, you know, Massachusetts is just over the border, and you can't, you know, even with the tax, you can't compete.
Yeah.
But additionally, you know, in looking at the retention, we're also looking at succession, and that's going to be a topic of conversation next month. And we've committed, the select board has committed to not only retaining but setting up succession planning and tried to identify, you know, what we can do to further our employees because, you know, the core function of this town is performed by our employees and our volunteers, and without either of whom, we would not be the vibrant community that we Anything else, Mr. Dean?
Not for me.
This was a long and thorough report. Thank you for your patience, but it's important for folks to see where their taxpayer dollars are going. We appreciate the effort that you put in with your staff, Mr. Dean, to prepare this.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the public? I don't see any hands online. Anything further from the board, or we could vote?
I just have one question. I'm not sure where it's applicable to ask it, so let me just ask it now. Our Budget Recommendation Committee, who vets everything very thoroughly, they did not have the 23 Water Street property that we just accepted as a gap, but we have to purchase at least a fence this coming year, and that's not a part of our budget. Is that something we should talk about now, or where would that?
I think Mr. Dean's already given that some thought.
I have, and my thought is that the Recreation Department has a revolving fund that has a fairly healthy balance in it, and I think to accommodate the fencing needed at 23 Water Street, we use that as our funding source.
Okay. So is that the one that historically has $100,000, and right now, in the budget, it's at $75,000?
No, that's the Parks Improvement Fund.
Thank you. Okay. So that, we have enough money, you feel on that?
We do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Anybody else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 10, the 2024 operating budget, to the voters' majority vote required.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed as 5-0. Article 11, the 2024 Water Fund Budget. Shall the town of Exeter raise and appropriate at a water, as a water operating budget and including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or is amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $4,962,773? Should this article be defeated, the water default, the water default budget shall be $4,828,764, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town of Exeter or by law. Majority vote required. Mr. Dean?
So this is an enterprise fund. It covers all of our water expenses, from operations to maintenance to capital equipment and debt service. There are five, five different divisions within the budget, including the distribution system, the treatment system, and this is the budget we're proposing for FY '24.
Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring them back to the board. Anything from the board?
Really sharp budgeting here. Very small increase.
Very basic.
And I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 11, which is the 2024 Water Fund Budget, to the voters.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Article 12 is the 2024 Sewer Fund Budget. Shall the Town of Exeter raise and appropriate as a sewer operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or is amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $7,490,430? Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $7,569,284, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Town of Exeter or by law. Majority vote is required. Mr. Dean? Anything specific?
I think just to point out that the lion's share of this budget, if you look at it from a financial perspective, is the debt service budget. And that includes the debt service on our wastewater treatment facility. That bill alone is 3, 3.5, 3.6 million dollars. And then this, again, represents all the operations and maintenance of our wastewater facility, our collection system, our pump stations, and also, I will say, our siphons as well in the Squamska River. So that is what I would highlight. We are also contemplating hiring an additional operator for our wastewater facility. That is something that the New Hampshire DES has recommended to us. After doing an inspection of the facility, they've come down and said, you really need a sixth operator for that facility instead of five. So we're looking to do that as well. This is all, this is, again, this is an enterprise fund. So people pay for this budget through their water and sewer bills on the sewer side of the bill.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? And no hands up online. Bring it back to the Board. Any questions or comments?
This is one of those times that I love, where a yes vote will actually keep your sewer rates lower. If you vote no, you'll get the default budget, which is larger. I always love that. Vote yes. That's it.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 12, which was the 2024 Sewer Fund Budget, to the voters.
So moved.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Article 13, plant a playground at a price of $595,000 to see if the town will raise and appropriate through special warrant article the sum of $595,000 for the purpose of purchase and installation of a new planet playground, including equipment, at the Town Recreation Park at Forhampton Road. Approximately $297,500 of this appropriation will be funded by a land-water conservation fund grant. This sum to come from an unassigned fund balance. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation. Select Board has designated this a special warrant article. Majority vote is required. Mr. Dean, did you have anything to add? I think we talked about this earlier.
Yeah, we talked about it earlier. And I really don't have anything to add, except for the fact that this is a special warrant article. So any special warrant article is able to be encumbered by a board vote for an additional 12 months without further action.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the public? No one online. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. Any comments? I think this is exciting, if we can get this grant. And, you know, we spoke of, Selectman Chartran spoke of the construction of Planet Playground many decades ago. And I'd like the idea of involving our citizens and putting together a committee when it's appropriate to do so, to get input and feedback, and then make it a community effort once again. There are no other comments or questions. I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 13, plant a playground at a cost of $595,000 to the voters.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Article 14, Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan, Water Street Stormwater, at a price of $100,000, to see if the town will authorize, and Mr. Dean, could we change this to the Exeter Select Board, as we're no longer the Board of Selectmen?
Thank you.
At the top, we can change that, please?
Yes.
Okay. I will read it, as you'll amend it. To see if the town will authorize the Select Board to enter into a loan agreement of no more than $100,000 through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund for the purpose of developing a replacement plan for Water Street Stormwater infrastructure. The loan will provide up to $100,000 principal forgiveness. Therefore, no repayment of the loan will be required, and a 3/5 vote is required. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Dean?
Just that we've been doing a lot of stormwater improvements around town, and this is another opportunity for us to get $100,000 through the state revolving loan fund at no cost to us. So this will put together a plan in the Water Street area for stormwater infrastructure.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? Nobody online? I'll bring it back to the Board. Any questions or comments? I would like to just take this opportunity to recognize all of our department heads, your office, Assistant Manager Roy, who are really aggressive, trying to seek every possible grant that we can. And I have to say, I think we're quite successful.
Thank you.
There are no other comments or questions. And I would entertain a motion to recommend to the voters Article 14, Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan, the Water Street Stormwater, at a price of $100,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Article 15, appropriate to Sick Leave Trust Fund, amount of $100,000, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be added to the Sick Leave Expendable Trust Fund previously established. This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation, and majority vote is required. Mr. Dean, this is a fund that we ask the voters to fund annually?
Yes, we do. We ask for it to be funded every year. When people retire from the town, or they leave with 20 years of service, they're entitled to 50% of their sick leave and our sick leave buyback program. And this goes, this funds that program. It also comes from unassigned fund balance, so there's no tax impact to it.
Great. Any questions or comments from the public? Bring it back to the Board. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 15 to the voters to appropriate to the Sick Leave Trust Fund $100,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Article 16, to appropriate to Capital Reserve Fund for the Parks Improvement, the amount of $75,000, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to be added to the Parks Improvement Capital Reserve Fund previously established. The estimated tax impact, is 3 cents per thousand assessed property value, or $3.34 for 100,000 assessed property value. Majority vote is required. This is a, this is a fund that previously has been funded at $100,000. This year, request was made in the initial draft budget of $50,000, I think, in an effort to, looking at the budget as a whole. The Budget Recommendations Committee had a very robust and thorough discussion with several really wanting to put it back to the $100,000 that's been funded annually. This is a fund that's used to make improvements to our parks. This is a fund that is spent annually. Our parks do require a lot of work. There are lots of improvements that need to be made, that have been made, need to be made. And it was an interesting conversation. And I think the $75,000 was moved by the Budget Recommendations Committee as a sort of compromise.
Right.
I always kind of subscribe to the theory that once you take something away, it's awful hard to put it back. So that being said, I would first open it up to the public. Are there any questions or comments? I see Mr. Beeson, the Parks and Rec Director is online. I don't know if he has anything to add. I'll give you a minute, Greg. Greg has his hand up. Can we let Greg in? Hi, Greg, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the Park Improvement Fund, which was established several years ago, has helped immensely chip away at deferred maintenance over the past few years. And really have made a big impact on the Parks Department as it is. So, really funny, it would be outstanding. I did send a list of potential projects to Mr. Dean earlier today. The one thing I want to reiterate here is, we just recently had a facility, our park, the tennis fencing, I mean, there's a number of projects. And that was just the tip of the iceberg of, especially the deferred maintenance projects that are coming down the line. So any kind of funding, we can chip away.
Thanks, Greg. We got most of that. I think we got the gist of what you were... Do you have a list?
I do have a list. I don't have it in front of me.
I don't know. I don't need it. But he was saying he submitted a list.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Great. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Well, I'm going to ask a question of our Town Manager based on the list that you were given today. Should we consider putting that to the historical 100,000 instead of 75,000?
Our opinion, I think, we've, as you know, and was reported by the Chair, when we developed the budget, we developed it with 50,000 in mind. So 75 is more than that. Based upon the list of projects, I mean, I will say that there are some projects, and we did just acquire a park to be downtown. So I think it's a tough call. It's one that I'm probably more comfortable at the 75 number, given all the entire budget. But I can also see some latitude as well. It's a tough call.
So where it's been funded annually at $100,000, would you agree that the 50,000 was just an attempt to try to cut for the sake of...
To trim at, there's no shortage of projects. I mean, that is true.
And you bring up a good point. The Budget Recommendations Committee made this compromise a month before 23 Water Street was even proposed. To your point, we have now taken possession of a property that is to be used as a park.
Correct.
And I'm not saying that, you know, this be funded for that. We made it very clear when we accepted the donation that it's going to get in line, you know, in the CIP. But I think that, you know, if you feel that list is thorough, I mean, taking away, for the sake of taking away where we have historically funded it at 100, again, I just fear, once you take something away, it's awful hard to put it back. But I would defer to my colleagues.
What if we did this? What if we respected the 75 that the Budget Recommendation Committee recommended, but we make a firm commitment as a Board to restore it to 100,000 next year? So this is a temporary reduction in recognition of those employee retention efforts that we made that drove most, a big chunk of the increase. But that next year, we're putting a marker as a Select Board on restoring this to 100,000. I think that's what I would be comfortable with. I'm very respectful of the Budget Recommendation Committee. They're all volunteers. They spend in a lot of time across late summer and fall doing their work. I'm always loath to overturn a decision they made. But I do think the 100,000 number is the right number going forward. So one year, down to 75, but next year, let's restore it to 100,000 as a Board.
Mr. Dean, what would be the tax impact on 100,000?
I believe it's four, I believe it's four cents. Four, yes.
Per thousand.
Yes.
Thank you. And I couldn't agree with you more. You know, prior to sitting here, I chaired the BRC for two years and served for three years. And I have the utmost respect for the work they do. And I like your, I like your offer to go forward with 75,000 with the understanding that the Board really gets back to the 100,000 next year. I do recall, though, that vote was, most of their votes were unanimous. That one was not. There was a lot of discussion.
It was split.
So to that end, I do, you know, there were a lot of members of that Board that...
There were three camps.
Yeah, there were.
One that wanted to keep it at 50, one that wanted to restore it to 100, and then a majority of their Budget Recommendation Committee coalesced around the 75 compromise. I'm respectful of that. But I do think 100,000 is the right number. Our parks are important. They contribute greatly to the quality of life in this town. So one year, down to 75, and then next year, let's, the Select Board is putting a marker down that 100,000 is the right number going forward.
And we have done that with other funds like this one. I want to say the Conservation Commission Fund, where we didn't fund it at all for a couple of years. And now we've brought it back because we need to, you know, for maintaining all the property that we have, and the projects that they are very good at getting matching grants for. So I, you know, I have no problem with the recommendation of the 75,000.
Any other thoughts?
I'm fine with Dan's compromise, as long as we, as a Board, are willing to put that fund back to 100,000, especially with them now inheriting 23 Water Street. Not that we will have maybe in 2025 any funding for that yet. I don't know. But they are going to have to, that's going to become their responsibility. So.
Very good.
Do you want to motion to that effect, or?
There you go.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the $75,000 budget that the Budget Recommendation Committee put forward. But we also understand that this Board would like to restore that to $100,000 next year.
I'll second that. And can I just add a caveat in there? Not to change it, but to just add that the Budget Recommendation Committee did not have 23 Water Street on their radar when they made that vote. So.
So we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I'm just going to say that I am incredibly respectful of the Budget Recommendations Committee, year in and year out, and the work that they do. And I have the utmost respect for my colleague, Selectman Chartran. I just can't vote, I can't vote yes on this. I think that the difference between the tax impact is not great. I think this is work that needs to be done. I like the fact that you, that you made your motion, that we'll bring it back to us next year. I'm comfortable that my no vote is not going to impact your motions. But I just, I would prefer it to be 100. Any of the discussion?
Yeah. I have a query about the process, in that we are binding a future Board to an action. And that is not allowed. We can't tell next year's Board what to do.
I think I phrase the motion, it's the sense of the Board that we want to restore this to 100,000. But...
As long as you make it not definite.
Yeah. You want me to withdraw and restate?
Withdraw and restate.
Yeah, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you.
All right, let me take another swing at this. I'd like to make a motion that the Board is going to accept the $75,000 number put forward by the Budget Recommendation Committee. But it is the sense of this Board that next year, we would like to see the number restored to $100,000 for this park improvement budget. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Does that meet your concern?
I believe so.
Okay. That's what I was waiting for.
And I understand that you're not with me on this.
It's okay. Damn. Damn. It's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'd say nay. Motion passes 4 to 1. Thank you for the motion.
Yeah. We still need to do a recommendation for this, though, right?
That was, that was it.
So, it's 4 to 1?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that was the motion.
You recommended the 75.
Got it, got it. Yeah, yeah. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, um, and I appreciate the way you went about trying to move that forward to the 100,000 next year.
You're welcome.
Article 17, uh, appropriate to the non-capital reserve fund, uh, sum of 50,000 dollars for snow and ice deficit, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 50,000 dollars to be added to the snow and ice deficit non-capital reserve fund previously established. This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. Estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation. A majority vote is required. I think it's pretty self-explanatory today.
Customary article, uh, because our snow and ice season straddles two fiscal years. December 31st is the end of our fiscal year, and January 1st is the commencement of the next fiscal year. There are years where we run over budget on snow and ice. So, years ago, we established the snow and ice deficit fund to be able to tap into the fund when we have years of snow and ice that far exceed our budget. And again, like I said, we've had those years. So, this is a reserve fund that we use.
Thank you.
When needed.
Any questions or comments from the public? None online. Bring it back to the board. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to recommend to the voters Article 17 to appropriate to a non-capital reserve fund, a sum of 50,000 dollars for snow and ice deficit.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5 to 0. Uh, Article 18, to appropriate to the capital reserve fund, um, 50,000 dollars to go for the ADA fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 50,000 dollars to be added to the ADA capital reserve fund previously established. The estimated tax impact is 2 cents per thousand assessed property value, or $2.21 per 100,000 assessed property value. A majority vote is required.
And this article is to fund ADA-related projects and to keep us in compliance. Uh, we have utilized the fund this year to add a changing table to the, uh, public restroom downtown. So, we'll continue to work on our ADA requirements, and, um, it takes a lot more than 50,000 dollars, obviously, but we try to chip away where we can with it, and it's, it's a contribution to keep that going.
It's very important work. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, bring it back to the board.
Only that I think with the reports that we've had, we probably need to look at this in the future to increase.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is going to take care of little small projects, but we've got some big ones that we will need to consider, so.
We certainly do. Anything else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 18 to appropriate 50,000 dollars to the ADA capital reserve fund.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. We're getting there.
Yes.
Article 19.
The amount is in the article, in the, uh, in the overhead.
Oh.
So, it is there.
I will read it off of this if I can. Uh, Article 19, appropriate to the trust fund, 3,500 dollars for Swayze Parkway, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 3,500 dollars to be added to the Swayze Parkway expendable trust fund previously established. This sum, this sum to come from unassigned fund balance. This amount is equivalent to the amount of permit fees collected during 2023 for use of the Swayze Parkway. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation, and a majority vote is required.
This is an expendable trust fund, which is why it appears on the warrant, just as it says, "We raise certain amounts of money for Swayze Parkway used through fees, and we return those fees to this fund to be used for the Parkway, specifically for the Parkway purposes."
Okay. Refresh my memory, please, if you would. Is there also a line item in the general budget for Swayze Park?
Yes, for maintenance and electricity.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recommend to the voters Article 19 to appropriate 3,500 dollars to the Swayze Parkway Trust Fund.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Uh, Article 20, to adopt investment services for capital reserve funds, to see if the town will vote pursuant to RSA 35:9-A2 to authorize the trustees of trust funds to pay the capital reserve fund investment services and any other expenses incurred from capital reserve funds income. Such authority shall remain in effect until rescinded by vote of the town. No vote to rescind the authority shall occur within five years of the original adoption of this article. The estimated tax impact is none. No amount to be raised by taxation. A majority vote is required. Uh, the trustees of the trust fund have been working diligently over the last year to look at the town's investments and how we can improve, um, our money management. And I think they vetted several, um, organizations in public meetings, and came to the select board maybe a month or two ago with a recommendation. Uh, they have also gone to the various, um, SAU 16 school boards, as they also manage those. And it's my understanding that, um, that the school boards, much like the select board, endorsed, uh, the trustees of the trust funds moving forward. Um, I think this is great work that the trustees have done, and I'm excited to see how we can build on our investments. We do have a representative of the trustees of the trust fund here this evening. I don't know if you wanted to, if you had any thoughts you wanted to add that I may have missed?
My name is Pat Curtis. I'm one of three trustees, uh, looking for your support to endorse this warrant article. We want to basically beat inflation.
Mm-hmm.
That's really our goal. And we want to use conservative investment strategy to do so. We did an extensive vetting process to select three bearings. Uh, David Mays is representing, uh, the three bearings. As the investment advisor, and, uh, we hope to, uh, raise more money than what we've been doing over the past decade or so. So, I'm just looking forward to having your support and the voter's support as well. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Terrific. And hopefully, this will also be on the school ballot, school ballots.
Yes.
And, um, again, for the, for the sake of the town, it would only be the percentage of the town's investment that, that would be responsible for, and same for the schools respectively. Any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Um, I'm very much in favor of this article. Um, I very much appreciate the, uh, work that the three trustees of the trust fund have done. Um, and, uh, I think, um, like so many towns across the region, the seacoast region, who are doing this kind of, or taking this kind of approach, um, to beat inflation is a, is fairly low-hanging fruit, and is not risky, and, uh, this is long overdue. So, thank you for your work. Thanks for giving us organized. Um, you've all put a tremendous amount of work in to get this to happen, and I'm very appreciative. And I'll be supporting this article.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Dean?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out that some may read this article and say, "What is the, uh, context of the no vote to rescind the authority shall occur within five years of the original adoption of this article?" That's actually in the RSA. It's in the statute that allows for adoption of this article, so-
Thank you for explaining.
Basically, once a town commits to it, they commit to that five-year window of operating under this, uh, this auspice without change.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? And, uh, Selectman Chartran, I echo your comments. I'm so appreciative, um, that this group of trustees have done the work that you've done over the last year, and excited to keep working with you.
Can I ask a question on the wording? Just to see if, because I think that's a really good point you just made, but I don't think it's clear in the wording. We can't change that tonight, right? To just say pursuant to the RSA, you know, so that the voters are clear.
I, I know this language was worked on very hard by the trustees of trust funds, and they've-
No, and I'm not, it's just, I, I'm just concerned that, once you said that, it didn't, it jumped out at me now, that-
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can share, keep sharing that information to people. Sure.
We're gonna have a explanatory page.
Okay. That will say that it's that vote.
So, the five years is the authority to hire investment advisor. We have the authority, however, to change investment advisors in that five years-
Okay.
If we're not satisfied with current. So, we can, we can certainly put that in the, uh, uh-
In your-
Information package.
Yes, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Yeah, this took a, this took a lot of time to write.
I know. And normally, I don't ask to make changes, but that kind of concerned me a little bit, that people who aren't listening to this aren't going to know that, and they're gonna look at it, and it's going to make them vote no, maybe, so.
And I think, I know you, you're gonna have that, that explanation sheet. I know all of the trustees, uh, I believe, are prepared to be a deliberative session.
Yes.
Um, and, and I've offered to speak in support of this as well, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
We'll try to cover it collectively. So, uh, I would entertain a motion, then, to recommend Article 20 to adopt the investment services for capital reserve funds to the voters.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you, Pat. Article 21, to establish a town solar array revolving fund, to see if the town shall vote to establish a revolving fund pursuant to RSA 31:95H for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a solar array on the crossroad town landfill. All revenues received for array operations from net metering, credits, federal grants and aid, and REC, renewable energy credit, sales will be deposited into the fund, and the money in the fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year, and shall not be considered part of the town's general fund balance. The town, the town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund, and shall pay out the same only upon order of the governing body and town manager, and no further approval is required by the legislative body to expend. Such funds may be expended only for the purpose for which the fund was created. Majority vote is required.
So, my comment on this is, uh, this would, again, set up a separate fund for us to, uh, account for revenues and expenses on the solar array out of a specific fund. So, it's an easier tracking mechanism for us to do that, uh, because there are, as you can see from the article, there are multiple revenue categories that we're going to be involved with. So, the more we can sort of herd those into a separate fund and make sure that we're accounting for them all in that regard, it'll make it easier for us to report out to you and the town as far as how the solar array is doing.
Great. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I'm just excited about this.
I'm excited, too. This is a great project. And appreciative that the voters have really carried this through several warrant articles that have been presented over the years. I would entertain a motion, then, to recommend Article 23 to the voters to establish a town solar array revolving fund.
So moved.
You said 23, but you meant 20.
I beg your pardon, 21.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. I'm getting ahead of myself. The Heritage Commission. Uh, the next two warrant articles, um, are a product of some work that the board has been doing over the last couple of years to look at our committees and boards, and more specifically, in the last month or two, looking at how we can better assure quorum, uh, looking at the makeup of the boards and committees. And so, when it came to water sewer advisory committee and the Heritage Commission respectively, um, these are two committees that we felt that we needed to revise, uh, the number of voting members and just the makeup of the committees in general, the commission, the Heritage Commission. But to do so, because both of these committees and commissions were established via town meeting, we have to go back to town meeting and ask the voters, uh, to allow us to revise the committees appropriately. So, with that, I'll start with Article 22, the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. That is to see if the town will amend Article 20 of the 2011 town meeting by reducing the number of members of the Water Sewer Advisory Committee from seven members to five members. Of the five members, two members shall be members of the select board. Members of the select board shall be voting members of the Water Sewer Advisory Committee. Majority vote is required. I'll open it up to the public for any questions or comments. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. This is consistent with what we talked about at our last meeting.
It's necessary.
Yeah.
If there are no objections, then I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 22 to the voters, uh, to amend Article 20 of the 2011 town meeting regarding the makeup of the Water Sewer Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? 5 to 0, motion carries. It's your committee. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to reduce the number of members of the Heritage Commission from seven members to five members. The composition of the Heritage Commission will include one select board representative, one planning board representative, one historic district commission representative, and two at-large members appointed by the select board. The Heritage Commission will include three alternate members, and a majority vote is required. I'll open that up to the public. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, just one suggested, and I just picked up on this, one suggested small amendment, and I would add, appointed by the select board at the end of the three alternate members. So, it's clear that the alternate members are also appointed by the select board.
So, it would read, uh, "The Heritage Commission will include three alternate members appointed by the select board."
Yes.
Okay. Any comments?
I will say that we need this, because I haven't been able to bring this to the Heritage Commission, because we have not had a quorum for several meetings, so-
It's needed.
Yes. Clearly, um-
And it's important work, and you need to be needed, so it's something we've gotta do.
We have to get some more education out there, and if we can't meet, we can't do it.
Right. So, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 23 as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. We have two left. Uh, we have two citizens' petitions, first of which is Article 24, citizens' petition, uh, regarding the rug property. By petition, to see if the voters in the town of Exeter support the future purchase of approximately 47 acres of property owned by the Rug family, located north of Oakland's Town Forest and east of the Woodridge Lane by the town of Exeter for the purposes of expanding the town-owned Oakland Town Forest and preserving open space, trails, public outdoor recreation, drinking water supplies, and wildlife habitat, to request that the selectmen review the project, including evaluation of potential funding options such as bonds, and to advise and authorize the selectmen to apply for, obtain, accept, and pass through any federal or state grants, loans, or private gifts, if any, which may be available for set acquisition in collaboration with and facilitated by conservation organizations. Uh, Mr. Dean, we can't amend any wording in a citizens' petition, but, um, moving forward, if there are any further ones, if we could remind the petitioner that we're the select board rather than selectmen?
Yes.
That being said, not to take away from the petition, is there anybody here to speak to that? Step up, and just give your name and address for the record.
Sure, yeah, exactly. Uh, Toby Ferton, 10 Stone Ridge Lane in Exeter. Um, I'm here tonight to, um, ask for the board's support to continue to pursue the acquisition of this land. Uh, I moved here about 12 or 13 years ago. Um, I bought this property, and for me, the draw of the open space, the trail network, and the land was something that brought me to this area. Um, I think we've shown that there is community support. We've had some preliminary, uh, support from the board, and I think it's a good reminder that as we move forward, the more support we get from the community, outside the community, and from the board, we are more apt to get awarded, uh, grants as we look to defer some of the cost for the purchase of this land.
Terrific. Thank you. Please.
My name is Sean Torres. I live in 18 Vinnie Lane in Exeter.
My name is Sean Torres. I live in 18 Vinnie Lane in Exeter. We moved here in 2013. We were new to the area, but we moved from Hampton, and nothing against any of the other towns around, but one of the things that drew us was how more cohesive, in a lot of ways, Exeter seems than some of the other towns, and a big part of that is the parks, open spaces, community facilities, downtown area, and so forth. And here in my biking gear, we use the trails for a lot of things besides biking, and it's, I think, becoming a really inclusive spot, so I support it as well.
Thank you very much. Please.
Tom Bergeron from Washington Street, and support the project definitely as well. It's one of the draws for Exeter from taking my little kids. The whole property network we have, from Fort Rock all the way to the other side of the highway, is just impressive. There's nothing else like it. There's the Academy Trails, but those are kind of small and confined. These are miles and miles of trails, so from having my kids snowshoe out there, to cross-country skiing, to hiking, the area makes actually unique, and I think keeping that in our community is a big piece of what attracts people to be here.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
John Elliott, 6 Tamaran Lane. Just to be brief, in interest of time, personally use this land a lot, and I think this is an incredible opportunity to expand the natural resource and public access as well, and I ask for the board's support.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Up in the hallway? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, can you explain why there is not a spot for the select board to recommend this article?
It's an RSA.
But if you could just...
Yeah, so, for a citizens petition, the select board is not obligated to vote to support unless there's funds to be raised in appropriate. That doesn't mean we don't support it, but we don't have a formal vote, like you've heard, you're gonna hear, in the next citizens petition, is gonna be a petition where we're gonna have to vote either recommend or not recommend, because the petitioner is asking the town to raise an appropriate money. I think that in our last meeting, when you all were here, and I'm gonna use this briefly to plug the deliberative session, because we had standing room out there, down the stairs and up the stairs, and I asked for everybody to be a deliberative session, and I have a feeling that you're all gonna show up, so I'm excited for that, and thank you for paying attention to everything else this evening. I think the board was and fully supported the plan that you all have, and we understood that this was the first part of it, that you were gonna have a citizens petition to keep the momentum going, that obviously, at this point, we're still doing our due diligence, and I think we explained all of that. We're expecting to get something back, I would think, in the next couple of weeks, Mr. Dean?
Yes.
And then we can start to move forward with that, so I'm gonna speak for myself. I'm not gonna speak for my colleagues. I mean, I'm still excited by this. I'm excited by the prospect. We do need to do our due diligence, though, as a town. It's something that we've actually been working on for the last year and a half, two years. And again, I commend all of you for just this roots effort that you've put together. It's amazing, and the number of emails that we've received is amazing, and, you know, at the end of the day, we all have day jobs, and at the end of the day, when you sit down and you have to respond to emails, this one was fun, because it's great to see the community back something so positively. All of your emails were positive. None of them were negative, and that's just a great feel. So, again, I support the effort that you're moving forward. I thought the plan that you presented to the board was very well thought out, and again, we just ask that, you know, you allow us to continue doing our due diligence. We're close to having that completed, and we'll continue the conversation, but that's why we wouldn't vote to recommend this formally. We can speak to it. We can talk to constituents, but that's the difference, and Selectwoman Gilman's right with the RSA, it's because the next citizens petition is raising inappropriate funding, whereas this one isn't. Did you hear any of that?
Yeah, I just, again, I want to reiterate what Chairman Papa Constance just said. This is a very impressive effort all of you have made. The way you packed the room at the last session, where this was on the agenda. How many of you are here tonight? You sat through our public hearing. I'm very appreciative of that. I love the fact that you're putting forward an advisory citizens petition to sort of take the temperature of the town. It's great strategy, great work. I'm very admiring of everything you're doing, and as the chairman said, we're just waiting on that report to give us advice on how we would move forward, if we would, but this will be important to see how the town votes on this. I have no doubt that you will marshal great support for this. Thank you.
I'll just, I'm not gonna repeat everything that Mr. Chartrand and our chair said, but I agree wholeheartedly. We're in the process, and we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, so we'll see what the next steps bring us.
Please.
Vanessa Glazare, 35 Woodridge Lane. Thank you so much for your support. We are very excited about this. As far as the due diligence portion, we've been very patient, and we were told that the middle of January is when the report would be done, so it's the 16th. When can we expect, and who do we prod to get?
Guy at the end.
I can't put an exact date on it, but I can tell you that there was a conversation that happened just as recently as, yes, today is Tuesday, today, on this particular issue for a progress report to see where things stood, and I came away from that conversation feeling that it was very close to coming to a space where recommendations could be made, and so, I, like I said, I can't put a date on it, but I would expect maybe a week and a half, two weeks out for an answer.
I'll call you.
And definitely, and actually, Mr. Chair, while we're talking about this, I mean, I think there's a good chance that by the next meeting, we'll have a good sense of where things stand, the next board meeting on the 29th.
Okay, thank you.
So, and I make the analogy, you know, we had the 23 Water Street Initiative kind of presented to us, and we had to scurry because of timelines, and because there was a definite date that we had to act, and we did our due diligence, and I think really up until our third public hearing, we weren't certain we were going to be able to accept it, because, you know, we had a very finite period of time to do our due diligence. With this, this is a much bigger scope than accepting that donation, but I use the analogy at that meeting, I'm gonna use it tonight, when you go to buy a house, or you go to buy a property, right, you've got to go through all of the steps, and you don't want to rush. We have a responsibility to all of you, but to everybody in the town, all of the taxpayers, to make sure that, you know, what we're doing is legal, the right thing to do, and again, just doing our due diligence. It's frustrating when we have to wait for reports. We did say middle of January last month. Obviously, Mr. Dean's reporting that the report's now delayed a week or two. It's frustrating, but we want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Okay, it's just, we're working in tandem with another town, and it's a delicate valley.
I understand.
And my comment back, again, I totally respect where you're coming from. It's, this is a very complex title issue.
I know.
So, trying to work through it has been a real challenge, to be able to get a definitive, okay, here's where you go, and just a little bit of, you know, preview, but it is a complicated issue, for sure, so that's why it is taking the time that it's taking, but we're getting close to the end and getting it figured out, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else before we move forward? Okay, we have one last citizens petition, Article 25, Swayze Parkway. On petition of Donald Clement and others to see if the town hall will vote to make the Swayze Parkway a one-way road northbound in its entirety for motorized vehicular traffic, and raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 to construct speed bumps and maintain the road. Is there anybody here to speak to this petition this evening? Mr. Dean, I'm assuming that you reached out to Mr. Clement to invite him?
Yes, I did.
Okay. There is no one to speak to the petition. Open it up to the public for any questions or comments.
Vanessa Glazare, 35 Woodridge Lane. I have heard about this one, so it's my understanding that as of right now, if no motor vehicles are allowed, then we cannot have something like a food truck event, or like, nobody can drive, even if they're vendors, does park? Is that correct?
No, okay. I'll have to answer that in parts. So, there was a, there was a warrant article two years ago that the select board moved based upon public comment, letters, phone calls, emails, both supporting and not supporting the road closure. My colleague, Selectwoman Cowan, made a motion to create a warrant article that was a compromise, and the warrant article called for the road to be discontinued from the Water Street exit to the gazebo, and then from the gazebo to the New Fields Road, that would be open. Even though, and it had to go through a process, so the warrant article was presented to the voters, the voters voted in support of it, it had to go to Rockingham County Probate Court, and then ultimately, it needed to go before a judge who reviewed all of the testimony and issued an order discontinuing the road. So, and that's a key word, is discontinuing the road, because it was a Class 5 roadway.
Right.
Now, it's not. That portion from Water Street to the gazebo, that's not, even though there's pavement there, it's not a road anymore. Last year, there was a citizens petition, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'm gonna go off memory, that basically wanted to reverse the warrant article and just put it back to a one-way road. That passed by the voters, but we had review of legal counsel, and if I'm misspeaking, please jump in, legal counsel reviewed it, and that citizens petition was not binding, because the judge had already discontinued the road, so there's no road to really reopen based upon the wording of that citizens petition. So, now, we have this citizens petition that's asking to raise and appropriate some money for speed bumps and maintain the road, and I'm not sure, there's no supporting documentation, so I don't know where the sum, what that sum's gonna represent. But back to your question, so that's the history. Then, we had the Siphon Project. I don't know if you've heard about it, but it's consumed the select board for about a year. And we had a special town meeting and deliberative session and all of that, so because of the Siphon Project, the road's been closed anyway. People can still walk on it and enjoy the green space, but the road has been closed because of the project. Once the Siphon Project's over, then, as the judge has ordered, the road will remain discontinued from Water Street exit to the gazebo, and then obviously opened up from New Fields Road in. If a special event is permitted through Parks and Recreation, for example, the Farmer's Market, there are some concert festivals, American Independence Museum works in tandem with Parks and Rec for fireworks, all of that stuff, if it's permitted, then obviously, those vendor trucks, the Chili Fest is another one, and obviously, you know, the roadway is able to accept those trucks to, you know, to make sure that the event goes forward, but that's not, that's not driving in, that's, you know, accommodating the event. So, does that answer the question? Okay.
I do have some comments, but do we want to see if anyone else from the...
Any other questions from the public? And I don't see anybody online with their hands up, so, Mr. Chartrand.
So, here's my, the gist of my comments. I joined this, rejoined the select board last year after our town election, and one of the things I've been most impressed by is the way this board is trying to find compromise on this issue. It's remarkable. A citizens petition passed, and that petition that passed two years ago really worked to find compromise. It was worded in such a way to allow the select board to seek compromise, to create more room for pedestrians and bicyclists, but still maintain some kind of access for automobiles. The entire year that I've been on this, almost a year that I've been on this board, I've been so impressed by how the spirit of that compromise has continued to guide this board. We've met with the Swayze Park trustees. We've had a joint meeting with them. We've brought goodwill and that spirit of compromise to our discussions with them. I am not in favor of this article, and I will not vote to recommend it, and here's why. I believe this article will restrict our ability to find that great compromise, and therefore, I would ask the voters not to vote for it, because I know this board is going to find a way to accommodate all and create access for all. We will not pursue a solution that excludes people from this jewel of a parkway. I appreciate that Mr. Clement and those that signed this have the right to put this forward. Citizens always have the right to put forward citizens petitions. It's part of our form of government. It's a vigorous part of our government. I appreciate that we all have that right, but that doesn't mean it's always the right thing to do, even though you have the right to do it. I respect the right to do it, but in this case, given the spirit of compromise that this board continues to work towards, to maintain access for all, I would ask the voters to turn this down. We have a great letter in our packet from Jen Martel, who has an extensive background in landscape architecture. She pointed out some of the history of the parkway, that Frederick Olmsted's sons designed the parkway. It's great information. It's just fueling this board's desire to compromise and not to mar this jewel of a parkway. This citizens petition, I'm respectful of it, but again, it will inhibit our ability to find that sweet spot, that compromise that we are so dedicated to seeking, so I would ask all the voters to respectfully not support this citizens petition, and I will not be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some thoughts, but I wanted to defer to...
Okay, so, this is the one I've struggled with in the full packet. I understand what Mr. Chartrand just said. This is my struggle. The warrant article two years ago passed. There were people that said they either voted for it and didn't read it properly, or didn't get to vote because we had a storm. Then, we had a citizens petition. That passed, and that's, the lawyer came and said, the reason why we couldn't do anything with the past citizens petition last year was the wording of the citizens petition. It said to keep the road open. The road had already been legally closed. And that's my struggle. I don't want, I think that it's up to the voters with the citizens petition, so I am leaning toward supporting it, not for the fact that I might agree with it or not, but I believe it's up to the voters to try one more time, to, and then we move forward. If it wasn't for what happened this past March, I'd be fine. I'd let it go. I am concerned after what happened last March. It passed, and our attorney said it was a simple wording that made it not enforceable, so I personally want to see what the citizens have to say in March on this. That's where I'm at. No disrespect to anyone, but...
Appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Well, I'm just caught up in the, is it even a road anymore?
It's not. It's discontinued. That portion is discontinued.
Right.
It's discontinued, not closed. It's discontinued.
And it would fall to the select board to lay that...
And it would fall to the select board to lay that road out again if it, if it came to that, and we would need to petition the court.
Right. It's not simple, that's for sure.
So you want to test the waters?
I just want the voter, look, they can vote for this whether we, we recommend it or not. I, all I'm saying is, when I vote to recommend something, it's not necessarily that I support it. It's that I think I support the voters making that decision. And that's where I land on this one.
All right. So to do this, we would have, we would have some work to do to declare it a road again. That part, that part that's closed.
If it, if it passes, then.
And pending, pending legal review.
Yeah, and we will have, we will have counsel available at deliberative session. To, we've, we've already had some preliminary discussions verbally with counsel, but counsel will be available at deliberative session to answer these questions.
Okay. On this warrant article, on the wording of this one or the previous?
Just the whole, the whole picture. Like if this passes, what happens?
Oh, okay.
Because, because, you know, there, there are some that are going to say, you know, the warrant article passed two years ago. The citizens' petition passed a year ago, yet the warrant article, yet the petition last year was found to be non-binding because of the fact that the road was already discontinued in the wording. So I think just having the counsel will be there anyway, but just to have him there to.
But it was because, I believe the citizens' petition said to keep the road open and the.
It was the word, yes, the wording, the wording.
And you can't keep something open that's already been closed.
Yeah.
I, I really don't.
But discontinued, the word discontinued is key there because that's what, it's no longer a class five roadway. It's discontinued, not closed. It's discontinued.
Yeah.
Legally, there's a difference.
Again, I'm not a lawyer, but I would have to say that.
I'm not either, but I've had, spent enough time with them.
Right. I'm just saying, this isn't saying to reopen or whatever. It is literally saying a one-way road. So I don't know. I, this is not easy, but it's here and we've had.
Well, and I mean, you could take that one sentence too, and I'm not about to do it tonight because it's getting late. But you could, you could, you could kind of try to decipher that and how it pertains to a discontinued road. Does it mean that it's only one way from New Fields Road to the gazebo?
For the rest of the night.
You know, so.
Yeah.
But that's not what we're being asked to do.
No.
So. Did you have any other?
No.
Snookerman Cowan?
I, you know, I felt really strongly when we, you know, I made the motion two years ago now. We heard from a number of folks about the accessibility issues with, because I initially wanted to close the whole road. I think it's, I think it is a missed opportunity for our town and community to have sort of two parallel roads there that, you know, I mean, I remember using it because I would drive down Swayze Parkway because it was prettier. And I would cut through and then, you know, then I had children and then I would teach them how to ride a bike and think like, I don't want anybody cutting through on their way to work. And I was really moved by the accessibility questions and how are people supposed to enjoy this parkway? Because I really believe, you know, Ambrose Swayze dedicated this to pleasure vehicles. And I don't think that that means cars in the way that we interpret them now. I think that that meant, you know, the opportunity to recreate. And so that is what I was trying to do with my original motion to make sure that this was available for everybody to enjoy it together. I did think, you know, initially that we should close the whole thing. And I was, again, like I said, moved by the accessibility argument to, you know, make sure that people can drive in and have an opportunity to enjoy the parkway like they always have. And so I am not, you know, I understand the voters, the voters spoke. The voters spoke, you know, in greater number. And we can, you know, argue about was it the, was it the turnout? Was it the messaging? Was it, like, I don't know. And, and then I also think at a certain point, we are also elected here, you know. So I, so I, you know, I, I felt like I was really speaking for a, for a population and for a group that was, you know, has not traditionally had their voices heard on this board. And so that's what I really wanted to do, to make sure that we were thinking about, 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 you know, being an inclusive town where kids and families and, you know, and events can happen because that was never my intent to close it to, you know, the farmer's market or food trucks or, you know, I, I just want to bring that space into, into full possible usage, which I think, I think we really did really well. And so I've been really encouraged by, you know, and I, and I understand like it's hard to envision what this could look like until we've done it because it is a, it is a messy mess down there right now. And, you know, I, I remember some of the criticisms were, you know, the mature trees and the shade. And I remember just like, you know, walking down the parkway to make sure that there were benches on the far side of the parkway that were able to receive shade from trees. So I really think we have done a really good job with this compromise. And I think that people are going to see that when we move forward here. And I also think, you know, we, we made, we made the decision. The judge closed the road, and here we are. And so we can keep fighting about it forever. You know, people keep having the right to, you know, petition anything. And I, you know, I agree and I, I totally understand your, your dilemma here. But I also think, you know, at a certain point, I just, I, I want to move on.
Well, can I just add one more thing? If it weren't for the siphon, we would be there by now.
Yeah, I know.
Well, if I could speak to that, I, I don't know if we would. I don't know if we found the right configuration yet. I know I'm not convinced that the turnaround that's been proposed is the right solution, given my reading of Jen Martel's memo, which I respect tremendously. So I, I think we're still in search of that right compromise that balances automobiles, bicyclists, pedestrians. And, and so, and I'm committed as a member of the select board for as long as I'm on this board to find that sweet spot, that compromise. And I don't know if that turnaround is it. So, but, but I do know that this petition, if it passes, could potentially restrict our search for that sweet spot. And so that's why I'm urging folks to join me in, in turning this down because I trust this board to find that compromise. And I ask the citizens to, to trust us as well.
So may I just add one? So I guess maybe I didn't, wasn't really clear. We didn't really pursue the turnaround because we were waiting to see what was happening with the siphons, the turnaround, and we were looking to do the pocket park for the Jude Law. So just to clarify, I guess I wasn't clear what my intent was on that comment, so.
No, I was, and just to be clear, I was speaking for myself.
Yeah.
I am not convinced we have found the right configuration yet, but I am convinced that we will find it, especially with the help of folks like Jen Martel, so.
Thank you, folks.
Yes. Everyone got a great history on the budget tonight, and you stayed awake.
I never conceived of closing the parkway until 2020, when we were hit with the pandemic. And under the governor's emergency order, the select board had the authority to close the road. And we did because by April, we realized that we were in, in this thing for the long haul. And this allowed people to socially distance, get fresh air, exercise, and it was a great thing. And the more you saw, and I mean, and when you went down there, it was packed.
I know.
Safely, safely, safely packed. But, and the outpouring of gratitude and support from folks who were trapped in their houses was just overwhelming. And, and much like my colleague, Selectwoman Cowan, I started thinking, wow, this, this could be a great idea. But then we started hearing from folks that we're not able to get to the parkway. We're not able to drive in. We're not able to park because of mobility issues. And it's really important to me, too. When I ran for select board, one of my platforms was making life better for seniors and children. And in order to do that, they have to be, in order to enjoy the parkway, for some, they need to be mobile. So I agreed with the motion that Selectwoman Cowan made. I thought at the time it made really good sense to try to, you're not going to make everybody happy, but it was a great compromise. And I thought it was taking the majority of folks in this town into consideration. Yeah, I'm not going to get into wording of one petition over another, but we haven't talked about the Swayze Park trustees here. Now, when I first joined the board, the spirit of collaboration was not as alive between the two bodies of elected officials as it is now. And the Swayze Park trustees are three incredibly, incredibly talented and dedicated elected officials. They care about the parkway very much. They work hours and hours on their own to make sure that the parkway is kept up. They are dedicated to that parkway, and they've committed. And I'm the select board rep to the Swayze Park trustees. And we've worked over the last three or four years to try to become more collaborative. And I'm very proud, the spirit of collaboration between the trustees and the select board. And that is a tribute to Dwayne Staples, the chair, Dave Short, and Darius Thompson, the vice chair. They've been invited to select board meetings. Anytime we've talked about the parkway or the roadway, we have always invited them. They sit there, they call their meeting to order, and we share ideas. And we don't, we don't always disagree when it comes to this. In fact, in fact, the chair of the trustees was the author of last year's citizens' petition. But as we've moved forward this year, he has continued to work collaboratively with the board, accepting what the legal opinion was. And I'm in a quandary here because that's where I'm at. Where are we? I mean, you know, we're bored working with the trustees, hopefully this spring to do something. Is it going to be the turnaround? Is it going to be, we don't know yet because the siphon project is, again, consumed us for the last 13 months. But I think that the majority of folks in, in, on the select, the select board, the trustees, and the majority of folks in town want to find a compromise. And I don't know what that is yet, but that's, was the spirit of what we've been doing as a select board, what the trustees have been doing. And then moving forward, once we kind of had an idea of what we wanted to do, we talked about having a forming, you know, a formal or informal committee of folks in town to sit down with us. Folks of all ages, just a diverse group of people in town to sit down with us and say, how do we make this inclusive for everybody or as many people as we can? So that's kind of where I thought we were as a board, and I think we still are. But this article, I'm not going to vote to recommend it to the voters. I, I think that obviously, you know, Mr. Clement and the petitioners have their right, and I respect their right. And I do think that this is something that needs to go to the voters. And I think the voters are going to decide, and whatever they decide, we're going to have to go from there. But, but I, I, I'm caught up in, as a select board member, recommending a sum of money to be raised and appropriated for, I don't know what it's for. $2,500 to construct speed bumps and maintain the road. Is that going to be enough? Is it too much? I don't know. So just in that sense, I can't, I can't recommend this as it's written, so. Any other comments or questions?
I will say I had the same struggle, same struggle, I think, as, as Ms. Cowan has said, and you've said about what's the solution for. Because the pandemic gave us a different experience of the parkway, that there was no movement to maintain that experience. And so the compromise, I thought, was a good one. I'm not a landscape architect or road designer. We had somebody volunteered a solution, which might make sense, but the spirit of, the spirit of the petition to close off a portion of the road, keeping a portion of the road accessible to vehicles was to make that area totally pedestrian. And, you know, learn to ride your bike or skateboard or get off the sidewalk and skateboard. So, you know, really, and I understand where this one's coming from. But there was, you know, there was a petition that came before and passed, or an article that came before and passed.
So our work tonight is, we have a citizens' petition, which we need to make a recommendation, one way or the other, because of the monies that are being asked to raise and appropriate. And that's, that's our job this evening. So I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 25 citizens' petition from Donald Clement and others to see if the town will make Swayze Parkway a one-way road northbound and to also raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500.
I'll move it for discussion.
I'll second it for discussion, but I, look. Listen to everyone here tonight. We all have our points. They're all valid. Ultimately, it's going to be up to the voters to vote for this or not. We're forced to make a decision on whether we support this because it's a dollar amount. I, all I can say is that I can't support, I understand it. I've been persuaded, I've struggled, I've struggled with this right till now. But listening to everyone, we are trying to do what's right. So for me personally, all I want to say is that whatever the, the final vote is, we will respect it and do what we can with it, if anything, and go from there. I don't want to discourage citizens' petitions, but we could be doing this every year, and we might.
We might. We might. So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
You said nay before.
So.
I really haven't.
You said nay.
Zero five. And then lastly, Article 26 is to transact any other business that may legally come before the meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the Town of Exeter 2024 operating budget public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is closed. We still have a little bit of regular business to.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. This is so past my.
I, I am right there with you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, I'm right there with you, Molly.
I have to ask you a question. Did you bike today? Did you? Terrific. Excellent. Thanks for coming out. Okay. Not over yet.
It's not over yet.
Hi, Corey. I forgot you were over in the corner. Good night. Thanks for answering no questions.
Thank you.
So Madam Clerk, we get to give my voice a little break.
Yes.
We've got a couple of solar exemptions and some veterans credit.
Yes, and Didi.
I couldn't get there.
Yeah, I need to find my agenda while you're doing that.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 70, Lot 57, in the amount of $17,500 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries?
I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 85, Lot 61, in the amount of $14,000 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries?
I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 95, Lot 1, in the amount of $12,000 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve veterans' credits in the amount of $500 for the tax year 2024 for the following properties. MAP 69, Lot 3, Unit 6. MAP 80. MAP 80, Lot 7, Unit 4. MAP 68, Lot 6, Unit 544. MAP 86, Lot 17. MAP 87, Lot 26. MAP 71, Lot 10, Unit 4. MAP 63, Lot 44. And MAP 64, Lot 97.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
And Mr. Chair, I move to deny a veterans credit for MAP 64, Lot 6, Unit 241, for the tax year 2024.
You said 64, but you meant 68.
Oh, yeah, 68.
I'm sorry, let me amend my motion. I move to approve or deny a veterans credit for MAP 68, Lot 6, Unit 241, for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
I move to approve veterans credit for MAP 70, Lot 4, in the amount of $2,000 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries? Bless you. Thank you. We do not have any permits and approvals this evening, Mr. Dean?
Yes, a couple of things. One is, I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of all the Fire EMS Department, Police Department, Public Works Department over the weekend. They did a great job with the flood, the flooding that we were experiencing around Swayze Parkway and the Water Street lots. Also, the Fire Department, obviously, was part of the, the fire in Epping that happened on Saturday night at the Fuel Depot. And we responded, mutual aid, and we were very busy that night. And fortunately, all of our firefighters are safe. Don Matheson ran the scene, did a great job, and the department just did fantastic work. So just wanted to acknowledge that. We also helped out in Hampton, mutual aid in Hampton, helped out in Newmarket. So we were very busy in other communities over the weekend with the Fire and EMS Department. So I also wanted to point out, too, the, we received word today that the Kingston Road Project is supposed to be substantially complete by July and complete by August of this year. So that is, that is great news. We were happy to hear that. And I reported earlier on the changing table, that has been installed at the Town Hall, so we're waiting for electricity to be hooked up with that, but we're 99% of the way there. And also Jeff Highland, we've been working with Jeff from Ironwood Design on some concepts for Swayze Parkway, so I just wanted to report that out to the board so you knew. Jeff gave us a proposal maybe three, four weeks ago on that. He hasn't advanced past that stage, but he did introduce us to some different concepts, again, that fit what we were, we, the town, had voted to support doing, that were a little bit different than the turnaround that's been put forward so far. So I just wanted to let you know that that was out there as well. And I think that is it for tonight. Oh, the Court Street Sewer Pump Station Replacement Project, that is actually underway. We got parts delivered today for that, and that was a Warren article that was from 2023, so that's being worked on as we speak as well.
Great, terrific, thank you.
Town of Exeter, moving forward. Nice job.
Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Belandra.
Okay, so my two committees, I've been sick, so I did attend, but via Zoom. So I'm thankful we have that option. So Conservation Commission, January 9th, there's a Connect to Protect Service Grant that the Board, the Commission, excuse me, authorized the Chair to sign. And one of the things, or go for, and Kristin Murphy offered a few suggestions, and the Commission settled on updating the GIS file, because there's quite a few missing files. So that was the priority, so they're going to go for that. Rug Property Update, Trust for Public Land requested a letter of support for a grant for new fields. There was further discussion on the Commission about why the grants were only for new fields, and they talked it through again and said, you know, they understood it was because new fields is further along than we are, but that there was an anticipation that grants would be gone after for Exeter's portion, too, and that proportionally, new fields costs are higher, potentially, than Exeter's. But they, they authorized the Chair to send a letter of support for new fields. Rain's Barn Update, they signed a one-year extension contract with a contractor who's been steadily working on the barn improvements. Hometown Grant is available to help with funding for the barn improvements, and Kristin expects to hear about that grant in mid-March. Around School Vacation, anybody paying attention, listening, they're going to do a full-moon snowshoe event, date to be determined, so keep an eye out. They're going to try to keep it up to date on their Facebook page and see if their timing works for Exeter TV's biweekly report. The Herd Bird Contest is ongoing, that's, I have to say, the Conservation Commission is really trying to do a lot of outreach for, for just a variety of people in town and interest, so good for them. There was a discussion about the Pickpocket Dam feasibility study being reviewed on the, at the Town Hall on February 22nd, 27th, excuse me, Linden Bridge Street, the second, called Second Bridge, Linden Street Bridge. Work permit has been received, so, and the staging area will likely be in the parking lot of the McDonald Conservation Property. Their next meeting is February 13th. One more. Planning Board, first public hearing on the zoning amendments. The second one is on January 25th. I encourage any, everyone interested to please listen to the meeting, or at least read the packet, because I could be here for two hours going through all of them, and I'm not going to, but I'm going to hit the high points. So amend Article 4, and the conversation was on ADUs and conversions, and to try to make them simpler and more concise, because there were some really oddities. So the Planning Board went through all of the proposed changes from the planning, our planning planner, thank you, sorry, getting late, thank you. And then to expand the MUND. So on the conversions, one of the changes is going to be recommended from 30% to 25% for maximum lot size. And the structure for a resident that would have to be a minimum 10 years is going to be changed, or proposed change, change to one year. And on the conversion, all conversions shall connect into the municipal sewer system. That's new language, and some of this language was to try to encourage more ADUs, housing, workforce housing and things, but also to take into consideration our, for Great Bay, the nitrogen.
Gym permit.
So they're really trying to make sure that people are connecting into our sewers, because there's a huge percentage of that problem is from sewer, from septic systems and not being connected. So also, municipal water shall be available immediately adjacent and accessible to property. This provision does not require connection to water, only that it's available in the event, and that's the P, I'm going to say this wrong, PFAS?
PFAS.
Thanks. They're becoming more of a problem everywhere. So our town planner felt it was important that if someone has a well, they want the people who are investing in these properties to have a connection if there is a problem. And it could happen really quick.
Selectwoman Belandra, when is the meet, the second hearing again?
The 25th.
Thank you.
And the 11th, obviously, was recorded. And then accessory dwelling units, there was about manufactured housing. The Housing Advisory Committee actually had tabled that recommendation to vet it a little bit more, and the Planning Board came up with what I think was a really great solution. It just said, why would we restrict that if it's allowed in that district, then, then it should. There was some concern that someone would just haul in a mobile home and call an accessory dwelling unit. What else? And then just the big, the big one on the MUND, on the mixed-use development, expanding it, the recommendation is going to be to expand it from, I believe, Walgreens up to the Town Line, Stroud Town Line, but then on Epping Road, it just would be expanded from Meeting Place Road to Front Line Pizza. But one of the things that they did recommend is to change the 35 feet to 50 feet in that one little area for mixed use.
Thank you.
Thank you for bearing with me.
Of course.
All really important stuff, a lot more conversation about the MUND, but like I said, I could have just.
I just wanted to add on to the ADU conversation, because that's going on at the House with several bills, that there was a report in the Portsmouth Carroll, I forget where I read it, but talking about making affordable housing and how we're going to go about doing that, and it's all a zoning thing, and that only two towns in New Hampshire allow, allow it by, we, we do by special exception, and other town does the same thing, and we're like the only two. Everybody else just.
The special exception is, for the ADU is being proposed not to be there.
Yeah, well, I'm saying right now.
Right.
Right now, we can do. Anyway, the, I met with the Energy Committee, we talked about the window fitters project. There's going to be a workshop going on for a week up in Conway, I believe, or Lebanon. I can't go, so I didn't get right down when it was, but it's to see how, how it all comes together. And we talked in depth with the fellow that runs the organization via Zoom. And what we, what we need to do first is get five volunteers to manage the different aspects of the project, you know, finding volunteers, finding the homes that want to sign up, finding a place, you know, getting volunteers to actually build the thing. So there's a lot of work, and we're going to decide at the February meeting if we want to go ahead and do this all this year, if we can grasp it, because the, the building would happen in the fall. And, and the work before that is, you know, signing, for someone to sign up, I want my windows fitted, and we have to have two volunteers, a man and a woman, go to each house so that someone's not intimidated by whoever's coming in, to measure the windows.
Okay.
So that's part of the herding of volunteers that has to be done. And the other thing was, the CPCNH Regulatory and Legislative Advisory Committee had some success last week, I think I talked about it, and we're looking at some more, there's some threats to the net metering thing, I had some concern about the, if we'd have a benefit from that solar array project, but we're, we think we're able to move the Committee, the Science, Technology, and Energy Committee along. There's one more thing with that. Did I talk about the, our new rate last week?
The last, at our last meeting?
Yeah, 8.1, so.
You delivered the good news last week.
Okay, well, I'll just keep reiterating, it's still good news. More towns are joining, so it's going to be, in my opinion, even better news.
Fantastic.
We're actually, right now, the second-largest energy sales company in the state.
Wow.
So that's it.
Thank you. Selectwoman Chartran?
I'm going to defer my Select Board report, given the hour.
Okay.
And I don't have anything to report.
I just have, I have the Tree Committee, which is always a nice way to spend a Tuesday morning, and they are excited with their proposed budget, and they're going to work with Bob Glawacki and Kristin Murphy to offer a survey to folks in town as to what kind of trees people would like planted and where. More to come.
It's a delightful Tuesday morning.
It really is. Correspondence, we had the Jen Martel email that we referenced during the Swayze Park. Speaking of Swayze Park, I do have a Swayze Park meeting tomorrow afternoon, so that's time.
Go get them.
River Advisory is canceled this month and will convene next month. So reviewing the Board calendar, again, January 29th is our next meeting, February 12th, February 26th, March 4th, and March 18th. And we have our deliberative session February 3rd, our town election March 12th, and then, of course, we'll all be together next Tuesday for the presidential primary.
Primary, don't forget to vote.
So, any other business? Mr. Dean?
Nothing from me.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A 32C.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belandra?
Aye.
Madam Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 5-0, Board will be moving into non-public.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.